I'd like to call to order the City of Littleton City Council Virtual Regular Meeting for Tuesday, August 18th, 2020. The time is 6:30 or 1800. If we could have a real call, please.
Mayor Valdez.
Present.
Mayor Protem Malin.
Here.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Present.
Councilmember Elrod. Councilmember Fay.
Here.
Councilmember Grove. Councilmember Milliman.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great. Thank you very much. That was the city clerk. If we could have Samma Fox, the assistant to the city manager, if you could please state how this meeting will proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, staff, citizens, and guests. I'm Samma Fox, assistant to the city manager, and I'll be serving as the moderator for this evening's virtual council meeting. We are streaming this meeting on cable channel eight, Facebook, and on our website, littletongov.org. Please be aware, comments left on Facebook Live will not be moderated and will not be included in the meeting minutes. Those wishing to participate in public comment portions of the meeting are advised to view the meeting on our website, littletongov.org via MyLittleton and Littleton8TV. This broadcast has the least amount of delay. The agenda will be handled by Mayor Valdez in the same way it would be handled for a regular in-person meeting. As always, citizen participation is encouraged during public comments and public hearings. To participate via phone, please call 669-900-6833. And when prompted, enter the webinar ID 920-6960-4909. There will be two opportunities for citizen participation this evening. Once during public comments and again during ordinances on second reading and public hearings. If you wish to speak during either of these opportunities, please call in early and stay on the line. Again, the number is 669-900-6833. When prompted, enter the webinar ID 920-6960-4909. When public comment or the public hearing is announced, press star nine to raise your hand and be recognized as a speaker. Microphones will be muted for all citizens calling in. Citizens can press star nine to raise their hand and be recognized. Speakers will have three minutes to address council. The city clerk will announce when you have 30 seconds remaining, and again when your time is up. We expect comments to be civil. Disrespectful or disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. For agenda items, Mayor Valdez will ask for a motion and a second, followed by a discussion and a vote. Council will vote on agenda items using a thumbs up for a yes vote and a thumbs down for a no vote. The clerk will call each vote with all eyes and nays. Again, if you plan on participating during public comment or the public hearing, please call 669-900-6833. When prompted, enter the webinar ID 920-6960-4909. Please stay on the line and press star nine to raise your hand to speak. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you very much, Samma Fox. All right, council, we have the agenda before you. Are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, it is approved. All right, we'll move down to our comments and reports. We'll start with the city manager.
Mayor, I do not have any report here for the regular meeting. I do have a couple of items that I'll brief the council and the public at the study session.
Great. Thank you. City attorney.
Just a couple of quick ones. Governor Polis extended the statewide mask order until September 13th. Today, obviously, we're under Tri-County, which is going through October 24th, I want to say, so not much of an issue for us. Just figured I'd put that on everyone's radar. He was a little optimistic in regard to the potential for reopening bars, which have been kind of shut down, but he doesn't think that the state is there yet. So still monitoring that. I did also want to make a comment regarding something that's on the consent agenda. Is the item referring a ballot measure to allow existing medical marijuana centers to sell retail? I just wanted to correct some perhaps misinformation that's out there. Our city charter allows for an initiative process, and essentially, individuals are able to collect a requisite amount of signatures. In our case, 5% of the previous elections' registered electors to place an item on the ballot. The individuals who were collecting for that initiative were able to get enough verified signatures. So that item is going to be placed on the ballot for November 3rd. It's not a city council, you know, action item. This wasn't placed on the ballot by city councils. So this is just an initiative, and cities, city council's role tonight is simply to refer it to the November 3rd election. So just wanted to clarify that as I had seen some things out there that perhaps were incorrect. So that's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on down to our council reports. We'll start with council member Milliman and then Grove.
Hey, thank you, Mayor Valdez. Couple of things. Uh oh, did I lose you?
Not where?
Okay, good. Library and museum. Happy to report that they are now both moving to stage two. Sorry about my CAD. Which is targeted to start in mid-September. Basically, the changes are to increase the hours that the library and museum are open, and also to increase capacity. The museum, their reservation system is working really well. They've had no problems. They've been selling out all of their morning slots. Their afternoon slots still have a couple of openings, most likely because of this wretched heat. The traveling exhibit Vibrant Bounty, it's Chinese folk art that is now open, and it's open through October 18th. Highly, highly suggest everyone try to make it through that exhibit. I heard it's really, really good. I'm signing up.
And you said it's the Chinese?
It's a Chinese folk art from the, oh, God, Tim, Sha-Ju, Sha-Ju region. And apparently, it's really, really beautiful artwork, and we're lucky to have that traveling exhibit in the city of Littleton. The other thing is the library, they're sort of on a wait and hold with watching to see what's going to happen with LPS. Kids go back to school August 24th, kind of a hybrid schedule, two days in the classroom, a couple of days at home. So they're not sure how that's going to impact the library with school-age kids coming to the library to use those resources or not. So that's it for the library and the museum. South Metro Housing Option, the board had a meeting last week. Couple of items to share there. The data refresh is completed for the BBC housing study that was originally done in 2017. And those the refreshed data is going to be presented to the council here in the near future, which I'm really excited about. And they're also going to be applying to HUD, Housing, Urban and Development. This is really cool. It's for the foster use voucher. This is a federal program, federally funded program, where we would, we're requesting, well, Schmo is requesting up to 25 vouchers, and it's designed to help youth or young adults coming out of foster care. Ages 18 to 24 would be eligible. Once they leave their foster care, then they're given these housing vouchers up to 90, excuse me, for up to 36 months, along with other supportive services through the community. The funds come through HUD, and we will be partnering with Arapahoe County Department of Human Services as well. So I think that's a really neat program to try to help those folks coming out of the foster care system to avoid homelessness, which is, I think, going to become more and more and more of a problem. And I think that's it. Hope everybody's.
Well, that sounds like a great program, because I know many of those foster kids, once they turned 18, they were kind of let loose. Yeah, that's kind of tough. Thank you for that report. Councilmember Grove, and then we'll go councilmember Fay after that.
I wanted to report on the Next Gen Group. Today, I sent everyone a letter from the group supporting the library and the museum. And as a reminder, this is the fourth topic the group has reported on since May. Remember, they sent feedback on the ULUC draft, a report on sustainability, and feedback on the events on Main and weekends on the, just regular events in the town and weekends on Main. Upcoming projects include feedback to public work on sustainability, especially stormwater, the PEL study, and the ADA transition. They are also interested in looking into the Littleton corridor and providing feedback on that. And that's it.
Great. And that was quite a good report from Next Gen. Thank you very much for.
Which one are you referring to?
The one you sent out today.
Oh, oh, yes, the support of the library and museum, yes.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Fay, then Elrod.
No report.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Elrod, then Driscoll.
Yeah, the Arapahoe County Transportation Forum last week. The purpose of Arapahoe County Transportation Forum is one of the sub-regional forums from Dr. Cog. The purpose for meeting was to approve the recommendation for the 2015 funding that would come from Dr. Cog. So there are three projects that will get submitted, and while the three projects are Greenwood Village, Aurora, and Aurora, Littleton is number four and five, so it's very likely that Littleton will move up that list dependent on the support of CDOTs from a funding perspective as well. So so good news for Littleton that we are pretty high on that list. The two projects that we have on that list relate to the eventual outcomes that would be coming out of the Pell Study regarding Santa Fe and capacity on Santa Fe, and then the interchange mineral. So those are the two projects that rank high for us in Littleton. Unfortunately, the light rail expansion on south, while it's not a Littleton project, we know it has a significant impact on Littleton, given the volume that we get out of mineral, did not rank on the list and impart just that is more to come as we work with and align with RTB reimagine. So that is where we stand with the Arapahoe County Transportation Forum. The other big topic there that's of interest to us here is the C-line from RTB. It will be indefinitely on hold or on pause as a result of the budget cuts, as well as the R-line that goes down to Sky Ridge. The concern here is that these are both, you know, lines that are supporting the south corridor so that, you know, as ridership starts going up, or as traffic starts going up, I should say, we limited the opportunity for transit. So that is, will have a big impact to us as we start seeing people moving around again. So ask for, in whatever way possible, for our support or our dissent on limiting the C-line and the R-line to the south corridor here. So that's Arapahoe Transportation Forum. Littleton Arts and Culture Commission met last week as well, and just provided some updates regarding how the art community is doing. They are truly struggling. They continue to be challenged by the orders because not only do they have to account for the limit of how many people can be in an enclosed environment, they also have to account for the actual space they have in there. To use Panha Art Center as an example, they'd only be able to host 20 people. So the point is, they are, they're really, everyone's really trying to work hard on bringing some of their events outside and are working with businesses and other entities in Littleton to try to collaborate and partner to still bring some of their production and programming to our community. And they've also were really good in reaching out to their network, both in the private sector and in the nonprofit sector for the creative industries. So hopefully, we'll see some of that being, you know, come through on our business grants to help sustain some of these companies and organizations. So that's where we are with Littleton Arts and Culture Commission.
Great. Well, thank you very much. And councilmember Milliman had sent out a link to an article regarding artists of different types, but it was very good. Thank you for sending out that article. All right, so we'll move on to councilmember Driscoll.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Staff and the merchants, downtown merchants, have been working closely together to try to get weekends on Main going again. And if everything goes as planned, we will be closing down Main Street at, I think it's typically around 4 o'clock on Friday, and reopening, and then reopening at late Saturday night. So come on down, support the merchants and retailers in downtown Littleton.
All right, great. So not Sunday?
Not Sunday, as far as I understand.
Great. All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. The Littleton Education Association had its best fundraising year ever this year, and raised money totaling over $750,000, which I think is an incredible testament to the support that our community has for Littleton Public Schools. But even pre-COVID, the district was facing a $4 million budget shortfall. And with COVID and some other factors, they are looking at an over $12 million budget shortfall, not for this school year, but for the next school year. And that would translate into over 100 fewer teachers in the district. One of the programs that potentially would be lost is the Village for Early Childhood Education. And we know how important equal access to early childhood education is if we hope for equally distributed upward mobility in our, in our culture. And so the Littleton Public Schools District will be putting a mill levy increase on the ballot for this November. And I think many folks, including myself, wish that these solutions would come from the state. It's left to local districts to try their best to make ends meet. The stakes are pretty high, and I wish LPS every success on behalf of their students. And the other thing I wanted to just touch on briefly is these items on our agenda on east-west connectivity. I'm super excited about the possibility of these, these projects. And I really want to thank staff for their hard work. I think that this is just a terribly important project. I'm really happy to see progress on east-west connectivity in the city. And that's all. Thanks.
All right. Thanks very much, Mayor Protem. All right, then on to my report. Regarding the census, Littleton, city manager, correct me if I'm wrong, we're still somewhere around 78%. Does that mean 78% of our total citizens have returned or answered or responded? Okay. And then, and that's a good number. The Centennial, I believe they're at 83% or thereabouts. And it's my understanding that that's one of the highest in the country for cities over 100,000. So Centennial's doing a great job. Sounds like Littleton's doing a great job. I know some of the mountain towns, I was reading when I was up there just the other day, they're hovering around like 30% or less in some of those cases. So that's, that's quite shocking if you're going to expect on a better census than that. I do want to express my appreciation to staff for everything they're doing during these times with COVID and adjusting how to do their work. Again, we were hoping it was going to be kind of a short-term thing, but it's becoming much longer as long as our Zoom meetings have been extended for the rest of the year. So my sincere appreciation, Mark, to your staff and to Reed. I know you and your staff have been very busy with your late-night reading and drafting up different things for us that, when you look at our consent agenda or other items, week after week, it shows that you guys are not just sitting around. You're out, you're all out there working to get things done and to help the city out. And again, my sincere appreciation to Reed and to Mark, to both of your staffs for everything you're doing, and the courthouse too. They're doing great over there too. So I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Also, let's see. Oh, our, our next, we do have a study session immediately after this meeting. We'll take a short break in between, but we will have our study session next Tuesday, which is August 25th. We will have just our study session meeting. And that is all I have for that. So we can move on to our citizens' appearances, of which we have none. So we're going to move down to agenda number five, our public comments. I'm going to open the public comments. It is now, is it here? We have 6:50. And Samma Fox, if you could please inform the audience how they can participate.
Thank you, Mayor. If you wish to address city council under public comment, please call 669-900-6833. And when prompted, enter the webinar ID 920-6960-4909. Press star nine to be recognized. Citizen microphones will be automatically muted until a citizen is called upon to speak by the last three digits of their phone numbers. Please state your name and district or address clearly for the record. A reminder, the clerk will notify you when you have 30 seconds remaining, and again when your time is up. Public comment is an opportunity to express opinions or ask questions regarding issues that are not part of public hearings on tonight's agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. The city clerk will notify you when you have 30 seconds remaining, and again when your time is up. The city council is not authorized by the Colorado Open Meetings Law to discuss, comment, or take action at the meeting on any issue raised by public comment that is not part of tonight's agenda. The mayor may refer the matter to the city manager and/or city attorney for immediate comment after public comment, or to staff to obtain additional information and report back to the council as appropriate. We expect comments to be civil. Disrespectful or disruptive comments will not be tolerated. Mayor, we currently have two participants in the queue. We are going to start with caller 883. Caller 883, you have been unmuted. Please begin speaking.
All right, caller.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Hello, councilmembers. My name's Jason Henderson. I live in District 3. I'm a children's book author and on the library board. Though I come to you as a citizen, I sent the council a letter about the importance of funding the Littleton Immigrant Resources Center for the record, and just wanted to say a few words, because although the letter is full of facts and figures, it's important to look at the big picture. The LIRC is a nationally regarded program where legal immigrants, these are green card holders, seek help becoming citizens. The center has staff, they train volunteers, and these services are not free. The LIRC offset 25% of its own expenses last year. So what I would like to, everyone to remember is that the men and women who come to the LIRC are legal immigrants working to navigate the line. Because we tell people, hey, get in line. This is the line. This is the line. We are defined by doing the things that are right, to paraphrase President Kennedy. Not by doing them when they are easy, but when they are hard. And I promise you, this is not a nice thing to have. Immigration is a cornerstone of American greatness. Hard-working men and women who need us are watching, and this is how they become an American citizen. And this is where it's valuable. It is valuable to them, but also to us. Because immigration makes us richer, stronger, and safer. The library wants to rise to the occasion. The LIRC wants to rise to the occasion. They have a GoFundMe page. They have volunteers, but they need the city. And to abandon legal immigrants, legal immigrants, in line right now would be a shocking dereliction of duty. Thank you very much. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you, Jason. Our next caller.
Thank you, Mayor. The next caller is caller 986. Caller 986, you have been unmuted. Please begin speaking.
All right, caller. Samma, are they still there?
Jerry, let me check something on the back end here. I think we might be having a slight technical delay. Just a second here.
You bet. You bet. All right. Someone want to sing a song while we wait? Karina, you're, you're into the arts and stuff.
Hello.
Oh, here we go. Sorry, Karina. Yes.
Hi, this is, this is Nate Thompson, and I'm the director of Social, Emotional, and Behavioral Services for Littleton Public Schools calling in. And appreciate the opportunity to call in. I actually apologize for the background noise. I am taking my son to college and calling in from the road here. But I felt it was really important to, to just get my voice in here regarding the Citizens Initiative regarding retail marijuana. And I did send some, some documents to Scott as our liaison, to the rest of you on the council, and I hope that you got those. I just wanted to reiterate how concerned we are as a school district for our children. And, and I understand there's a lot of reasons that this will go on the ballot and that the council may not have a lot of choice in that with the Citizens Initiative. But my main goal is to really just ask that all of the council members would, would really make sure that as they speak with their constituents, that they're clear how concerned the school district is with this potential initiative. And I really just want folks to know that this sends a really, really terrible message to our kids. And, and retail is probably not the best word. Recreation was really the word. And the challenge that we've had with our kids using high, high potency THC products is only going to get worse if this goes through. So just wanted to get, get that voice in there, and I'd be happy to talk with anyone if they want to reach out with questions. But I wanted to express that and ask the council to really consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Nate, and please drive carefully. All right. Samma, do we have any other callers?
Thank you, Mayor. Our last caller is caller 819. Caller 819, we are unmuting you now. We are experiencing slight delays at unmuting, so let's please be patient for a minute as we will unmute shortly, and then we'll be able to speak.
All righty. Karina, you may get your, your chance yet.
It should be any second now. We apologize. It should be any second now. We apologize for the delay.
Not a problem.
Hi, Council. This is Pam Chadborn um in District One. A couple of things. Today is the hundredth anniversary of the ratification of the Nineteenth Amendment to the Constitution. And that prohibited uh the federal and state governments to deny the vote to women. That is very cool, but as is my want, I'm going to point out that the Constitution was ratified in seventeen eighty-nine. And I'll mention, I've said this before, um my family, uh Robert Chadborn, his wife, and five kids came here in sixteen thirty-four. So it took a hundred and thirty-one years of US government before women got the right to vote. And arguably, we don't have equality yet. So I'm reminded of the phrase, and I don't think Churchill said it, but Americans will always do the right thing after they've tried everything else. So I'm going to refer to Phase Two amendments and then say, I have a vision for Littleton. UFIGA is for Slaughter House Gulch in Little's Creek on your consent agenda tonight, and you've got a discussion on revenue in the study session. I've got a concept of Littleton that includes and addresses those and other issues. And the principles are that Littleton should exploit its unique assets. Economic gardening plus good zoning created a healthy economic environment that persists to this day. I heard at a council comment during uh Tiffany's presentation on COVID that we're lucky. Littleton is not luck, Council. This was smart, informed, intentional design that produced the city we have. And you need to recognize the strengths that we have already and play up on those, which we're not doing. Littleton has location, location, location. We do not need to settle for the common mediocre current buildings and design. And the market, markets are a dive to the bottom. And the real estate problems that happened in two thousand seven eight haven't been solved. So remember successful design and planning approaches from the past and build on those. So my comment is Littleton at large, we should have the north side preserve a historic commercial and residential flavor. And the south side can be more current while keeping quality standards. And population growth needs to be defined at the outset um as growing equally in all districts.
Thirty-seven.
Keep commercials scaled about the same and keep residential off the traffic corridors. It was not a good idea before. It's not innovative to do that. Now it's dumb. So envision the north side from Lowell Boulevard to Broadway on Bellevue and Bowles through Main and Alamo on Littleton Boulevard as a unique retail corridor. And we know that retail is going to face challenges. What makes retail strong? Well, a unique area with this historic tie. And so I have more about that. You can imagine, but um yeah, let's do better than the Phase Two amendments.
Thank you very much for calling in, Pam. All right. Yeah, Samma, do we have any other callers?
No other callers. No other callers in the queue.
Great, thank you. And with that, we will close it at uh seven o'clock. I will close the public hearing. And we will move on to our consent agenda. Uh Samma Fox, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Consent agenda items may be adopted by a simple motion. All ordinances must be read by title prior to a vote on the motion. Any consent agenda items may be removed at the request of a council member.
Great, thank you very much. And Councilmember Driscoll, if you will please uh introduce the items.
We have a few. Buckle up. Resolution sixty-three dash twenty twenty approving the Sixth Amendment to the Agreement for the R K D Funding for the Littleton Shopping Cart. Resolution fifty-seven dash twenty twenty authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Littleton and the Repo County Board of Commissioners regarding a twenty-twenty grant of a Repo County Open Space Program funds for this Slaughter House Gulch uh Park Trail Connection. Resolution fifty-five dash twenty 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 authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Littleton and the Repo County Board of Commissioners regarding twenty-twenty grant of a Repo County Open Space Program funds for this uh Supriki Parcel and Reynolds Landing Park. Resolution fifty-six twenty twenty authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Littleton and the Repo County Board of Commissioners regarding a twenty-twenty grant of a Repo County Open Space Program Funds for the Jackass Hill Gulch Restoration and Stabilization Design. Resolution
I heard a poll. Councilmember Elrod.
Resolution fifty-four dash twenty twenty authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Littleton and the Regional Transportation District for inspections of Little Creek Flume Structure. Resolution sixty-two twenty twenty referring to a um the registered electors of the City of Littleton, Colorado, a ballot question regarding authoris- authoris- authorizing the sale of retail marijuana in the City of Littleton. Resolution fifty-eight twenty twenty authorizing intergovernmental agreement between the Repo County Clerk and Recorder and the City of Littleton regarding the con- conduct and administration of the November third twenty twenty coordination election. Resolution fifty-nine twenty twenty authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the Douglas County Clerk and Recorder and the City of Littleton regarding the conduct and administration of uh the November third twenty twenty coordination election. Resolution sixty dash twenty twenty authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the Jefferson County Clerk and Recorder and the City of Littleton regarding the conduct and administration of the November third twenty twenty coordination election. Resolution sixty-five dash twenty twenty amending the City of Littleton's twenty-twenty fee schedule building evaluation data. Ordinance thirty dash twenty twenty, an ordinance on first reading adding section six dash four dash seventy-five regarding fireworks to the Littleton City Code and amending sections one dash six dash dash eight regarding the municipal court process. And finally, ID number twenty dash two one three, approval of the August fourth twenty twenty virtual regular meeting minutes.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Driscoll. All right, Council, we have uh consent agenda items A through C and E through I. Do I have a motion?
Uh Mayor, that's E through L.
Oh, I'm sorry, L. Thank you for the correction. Uh Council, do we have a motion?
I'll be happy to make a motion. What what one did we pull?
D. D is the one we pulled.
I make a motion to approve consent items A, B, C, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L.
And I believe Council Milliman just seconded it.
Second, yeah.
Yeah, all right. All right, Council, uh let's go ahead and we'll do a thumbs up for a a vote. A thumbs up is to approve. A thumbs down is to uh not approve. Okay, ready? Vote.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank you. And we'll return back to resolution fifty-six dash twenty twenty authorizing the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Littleton and Repo County Board of Commissioners regarding twenty-twenty grant of a Repo County Open Space Program Funds for the Jackass Gulch Restoration and Stabilization Design. Councilmember Elrod.
Thank you. Um so I pulled this because I had a follow-up a question or request that I had made when this presentation was shared with us some time ago. Uh there is an adjoining property to that area um with the High Line Canal actually dividing um the Jackass Gulch area and a um property in the South Bridge neighborhood. That property actually um contains a detention pound now, and so I had requested that we consider that additional property in a bigger scope arrangement of um designing for this area. That property is also on our open space um project or or properties of of interest that we've looked at in the past. So if um Mark can speak to how we can consider that additional scope um either now or in some future phase.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My suggestion would be if there's interest on the part of council here to kind of expand the study area to capture this detention facility that Councilmember Elrod was describing, that we go ahead and execute the contract here that we have for this grant. And that during the budget process, staff would bring back uh for consideration an amendment that we would add to the contract for design uh that the city would pay for in our stormwater utility to kind of expand the scope. That would in essence allow us to design all this facility all in one uh effort. And so it would be kind of a larger uh design process. That'd be my suggestion.
Councilmember Elrod.
Yeah, so in that case, it wouldn't compromise this um this grant or this program. We can um bring that to a a future session to determine the potential increase in scope at that time.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Now, uh correct me if I'm wrong, City Attorney, but we do not have to take this to a public comments. Correct? Never sounds so good.
Mayor, may I uh Mark, if you if you uh would permit me, I'd like I'd like to add a little bit more information to that.
Sure. Go ahead. Let me hear from, if if I could hear from Reed first, we'd, we're not doing public comment on this particular issue, correct?
That is correct. We're not, we're not accepting public comment.
Thank you. I'm sorry, if you will.
So one thing I wanted to clarify is that the grant um eligibility is specifically for publicly-owned properties. The the existing detention facility in the South Bridge neighborhood is on um privately-owned land, so the grant is not eligible for that particular area. Um however, by the way, my name is Carolyn Rowan. I'm the Water Resources Manager here at the city. I apologize. Um, we are in the midst of a master plan effort with Mile High Flood District and a consultant to look at all of the different opportunities for detention within the basin. So that area is going to be under consideration. Uh it but it only drain, you know, only a certain area drains to it. Um the area that we're talking about on the public side drains additional um drainage area. So it may be more effective to do work where we're talking about.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh Councilmember Elrod, would you like to make a motion?
Um so I guess uh the motion would be to uh approve consent agenda item D. Let me read it. Resolution fifty-six dash twenty twenty authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Littleton and the Repo County Board of Commissioners regarding a twenty-twenty grant of a Repo County Open Space Program for the Jackass Gulch Restoration and Stabilization Design.
Yep, okay. Council, uh Mayor Protem was the second on that. Uh Council, if we're ready for a vote, uh thumbs up to approve, thumbs down to deny. Um vote.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you, Council. We'll move down to our general business. We have uh under item seven A, Resolution sixty-one dash twenty twenty authorizing the adoption of a metro district policy. And Council, you did receive uh uh information from our city attorney on his uh suggested uh uh policy that he would like to put in. And we did also receive uh from some other members some uh possible amendments to consider. Uh city ma- or city attorney?
Um I don't have anything to add. Uh I'll wait for those members of councils that may be interested in providing amendments um after it's been um motioned and and seconded to start discussing those, but I don't have anything to add at this point.
Thank you. And Council, if you will, please use the hand raise icon so I can take you in the order, and that way we'll make sure we get it. Uh Council, who would like to start out? Okay, first, uh we we don't have a motion yet, uh so we can go ahead and have a motion now, then we can move into discussion and possible amendments. If someone would like to make a motion.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the adoption of a metro district policy.
Second.
I'm sorry, was that Councilmember Elrod the second? Yeah, yep, thank you. Okay, Council, let's uh go into discussion. Do we have anyone? Okay, we have uh Councilmember Milliman, if you could, please.
We're just discussing.
If you could, I I'm I'm having trouble hearing you. I don't have anybody else.
Sorry, is this the appropriate time to make an amendment or um or are we just discussing it right now?
We're, if you have an amendment, you can make that at this moment, or we can do discussions, whatever you would. If you'd like to make an amendment, uh go ahead.
I would like to make an amendment. On page six of the policy, the maximum mill levy right now is forty mil, forty mils. I'd like to increase that to fifty mils. Um that's pretty much just the lowest in uh that most metro districts, I think, would be willing to accept. I think if we go up to fifty mils, that gives these um these development properties a little bit more leeway to really enhance and um those developments, uh perhaps they could add in community centers or swimming pools or more hiking trails. It just makes it more it makes it more of a homey community, and and those buyers of those homes will now know, you know, what they're what they're getting into and what they will be paying. But I I really think that we should go up to fifty mils and not um not keep it at forty mils.
Okay, we have a motion to uh move it to fifty mils. Do we have a second?
My second.
We have a second from Mr. Driscoll. Council, discussion. All right, we have nobody raising their head. Uh Councilmember Elrod, uh she's raising her hand.
I raised my hand on the Zoom as well. Reed, can you talk a little bit about um, you know, the, you know, how substantial the difference is between forty and fifty mils from a property owner perspective versus the, you know, the incremental potential that a developer can get for that? I don't know if you can do that math, but how big of a, you know, how significant is that shift for either party?
Um, well, it is a great question. It it probably calls on me to to speculate. I I will tell you, you know, just kind of doing some some rough math, if you will, in terms of what forty mils means to a home that would be, you know, say priced at, let's just say, five hundred thousand dollars, that would come in. Um we're looking at about probably an additional seventeen hundred dollars or fourteen hundred dollars is actually fourteen thirty would be the additional property tax on that. So an additional ten percent. You know, we're looking at, you know, another hundred and fifty dollars to go up to um approximately fifty mils. Um it's largely dependent upon um, you know, the valuation of of your home and what you decide to put in there. Um I can't actually speak for a developer in terms of um, you know, the bonds that they would issue or a metro district in terms of the bonds that they would issue in terms of what they could get for 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 fifty as opposed to what they could get for forty. Um it's pretty common to see operations and maintenance of existing infrastructure that they place in at around ten or fifteen mils. So generally speaking, you know, we're talking another fifteen to twenty-five mils, which are for the actual construction of those improvements. But it just leads me to gas as to what that does for them and what that doesn't, obviously probably helps them.
Councilmember Fay.
And I and I did ma- bad math, so hopefully Tiffany's not listening. So I said ten percent, it would be twenty percent, obviously, from forty to fifty, so we're talking you know, an additional two hundred fifty dollars on in property tax. Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Fay.
We talk about affordable housing, and now we're talking about making housing less affordable. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh any other comments on this amendment? All right, let's go ahead and we'll take it to a vote. So Council, a thumbs up is to approve the amendment. Uh thumbs down is to deny the amendment. Uh ready? Vote.
The vote is two in favor with Councilmembers Driscoll and Milliman voting yes, the motion fails.
Yeah, thank you very much, Council. We're back to our original motion. Do we have any other discussion or amendments to be made? We have a Councilmember or a Mayor Protem, if you will, please.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I have an amendment uh in this language suggested by the city attorney. So Reed, I appreciate that. Let me just get it in front of me uh real quick. I just had it until Reed was doing his math, and I was referring back to another email. He'd sent me with that same math. So uh I move to amend the metro district policy to require that the disclosure that is recorded with the county also contain a range of what the mils translate into also contain a range of what the mils translate into in dollars.
Do we have a second?
My second.
I'll second.
Well, councilmember Grove has a second, uh, discussion?
I, I'm happy to start, mayor.
Yes, please.
The idea here is simply to enhance the notice that, uh, potential home buyers receive. Right now, the notice is written, uh, in, in mils, which, uh, is difficult for people to translate, uh, by themselves into dollars. So there would be an example of a hypothetical, uh, home price, say five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and alongside that would be the mils and then alongside that would be, uh, the actual tax burden in year one in dollars. Uh, I think it, uh, just adds transparency to the notification. I think it's simple enough for us to, to do this for potential home buyers.
Great. Alright, councilmember Elrod?
Um, can you talk about, uh, Reed, um, if you could comment on, you know, operationally, how, how do we do this? Um, how do we ensure that it's accurate? How do we ensure that it's being fulfilled? So just operationally from an executional perspective, is this possible?
So obviously that's going to be part of basically the, the service agreement that the city council agrees to with the metro district um, in terms of requiring it to be recorded, um, with the county. That way, anyone who's pulling any records has notification of that. Additionally, I think probably a stronger, uh, communication piece will be, um, what comes through in a development agreement, which would be separate from the metro district, um, and a requirement to get the, um, the developer to require the various builders, as you know, um, any new developments, there's oftentimes, you know, half a dozen different types of home builders. Um, but in the development agreement, to get them to require that same sort of notification um, for the builders that ultimately send those homes. Um, so in terms of, you know, we can certainly audit it to make sure that that's being done. Um, but that's probably how we're going to best make sure it's occurring is, is one, requiring it in the, uh, metro district service plan as well as in the development agreement that ultimately the city would, uh, agree to.
Thank you. Councilmember Grove?
I want to say that I agree to the increase in transparency. We just got an email today from a citizen, uh, in Littleton Village that talked about how her property taxes have doubled since she's been there and how there's a variety of other issues she's had to deal with, living in a metro district. I advocate for protecting our citizens.
Great, thank you very much. And, uh, I'm up next. Uh, my question would be to our city attorney. So then as, as far as, uh, developer, are, are we holding them to an exact number here or would it be more or less an, an estimate?
It's going to be an estimate because obviously every two years, the, um, the assessment rate for both commercial and residential property changes and it's obviously contingent upon the valuation of your home. So it's going to be kind of a range. I'm thinking probably every, every fifty to fifty thousand increment to provide a range. Um, just so that, uh, any person purchasing a home has a better idea, but it's not going to be an, an exact number. It's impossible to know.
Great. So we're talking at that point at least real dollars instead of a mil?
Correct. Well, there will be both. So it'll be in mils, but it will also have the estimate.
Great, thank you. Uh, we'll move on to councilmember, uh, Milliman. No, I'm sorry, councilmember Elrod first and then Milliman.
I think there is, um, a risk that with the intent of trying to be transparent, we may misrepresent. As, um, Reed just stated, it's one, it's a range. It can change every couple of years depending on the market. Um, and I also, I'm, I'm trying to think through, um, what happens when the home is sold five years from now. The developer is out of the picture at that point. So I actually think while the intent is to be transparent, um, there may be a risk of misrepresentation, which was, uh, a very, um, you know, an, an even worse expectation um, from, from the, um, from the individual. So I, I can't support this. I don't think it's, um, I don't think it's the, the intent would be successfully fulfilled. And I think it also creates a lot of, um, um, overhead and operational, um, challenges and responsibilities, um, on potentially the city as well, right? Um, so I can't, I, I think this is, um, too cumbersome for the, um, value and intent that I do not believe will be there.
Great, thank you. Uh, councilmember Milliman, did you lower your hand?
I did, but I'll, I'll just say really quickly, I know that we, um, we keep using Littleton Village as, um, the example, um, throughout this discussion with metro districts. And I do believe that they've had a lot of issues and it's just not good. It's not good apples. But there are so many other good metro districts out there that have created really solid, um, communities, neighborhoods, and we're overlooking that. There's a place for them and, um, I just wish that we would have heard more, we could have heard more from, um, representatives from some of those, um, areas. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, mayor Protem, did you lower your hand? Okay, cool. Well, then we'll move on to councilmember Fay and then Grove.
Littleton Village keeps coming up because it is the metro district that Littleton has. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Councilmember Grove?
I think this amendment is just intended to, uh, close any loopholes so that, um, things that shouldn't be happening aren't, excuse me.
Good, okay. Uh, we'll move back to councilmember Milliman. I'm sorry, Kelly, if you could unmute yourself.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. So Mark, could you, um, or maybe Reed knows this. Um, I believe that Trailmark is a metro district. Is that correct?
I cannot confirm that, to be honest. I think whatever, uh, debt they may have had, um, they probably paid that off, but, so whatever responsibilities are left, they, I know they function mostly like a typical HOA at this point, but, um, I just not, I can't confirm exactly their history.
Okay, and is, as South Park is, and is South Park is, uh, kind of like a metro district or special district, sort of operating in the same way? That, is that true?
You can't really hear you, Kelly.
Sorry, is South Park another, is, isn't South Park the neighborhood South Park? Um, that's a special district or a type of metro district?
Uh, let's see, uh, great question.
It was, and it has extinguished its debt, so it is no longer functioning in that capacity. And I believe it, um, changed over to kind of an HOA.
Great, right. Thank you. We have councilmember Driscoll.
Yeah, I think Karina brings up a very valid point, but I think it would be easy enough to overcome. I like what Scott's proposing and I think it would be easy enough to just, oh, put some language in there. It says, after three years or whatever, you know, the, the years we thinks best, we, we're, we're out of the picture. Um, so I, I still want to go down this road with Scott, but I just, you know, I, I hear what Karina's saying.
So if, if I can chime in here, so the requirement that, that the mils are recorded with the county is already in the metro district policy. So we're already going to record it. So anyone who's, so whether it's a subsequent purchaser of that home, they're going to have some sort of notification that they're in a metro district if they haven't done their due diligence to find out beforehand. What, uh, mayor Protem amendment does is really just converting this into a, a real number that actually, um, as opposed to trying to do some conversion of what mils translates to in your head, so.
Councilmember Fay, did you mean to lower your hand?
Yes, I meant to lower my hand.
Oh, okay, thank you. Councilmember Elrod?
I, I think we heard from the consultant that, um, you know, you know, while we just, uh, it is disclosed that a particular property may be subject to, is in a special district area. And special district can mean a variety of things, metro district, um, South suburban is a district, et cetera. And I think, again, I, I just can't stress enough, um, the, um, the misrepresentation that this may cause. Because again, you know, the, the reading, the fine print, while one may look at this and, um, we may, our intent may be that this is just to represent the range uh, for the metro district. There are other districts that will also have a cost associated with them. And again, when that, um, consumer in this case purchases and sees a different number, they're like, wait, they told me it was somewhere between a hundred and, you know, three hundred and now it's five hundred. So where did that come from? So I, again, it's the, I, I, I support the intent, but I really feel it, it is going to, you know, um, really bite the consumer in the butt, to be quite honest with you, that, um, they're, they're not going to get the information. They're getting information that I think they, um, um, is still a, a, a component of a bigger picture and will cause more harm and misrepresentation than, um, good.
Uh, ca, uh, city attorney, did you, you have your hand up?
Yes, I, I was going to, um, councilmember Milliman had asked about Trailmark. Trailmark is, uh, a metro district right now. They're in the operation and maintenance phase of their, um, of their metro district. So they've discharged the debt and it's just, um, O and M right now.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Yes, Reed, do you have any concerns about, um, if, if we add this, uh, a, amendment, uh, with getting drug into a lawsuit, the city getting drug into a lawsuit or anything like that down the road? I don't see why we would, but I'm just wondering.
I don't have any concerns on that. I mean, they'll obviously be able to see the, the data, the disclosure and what the mils were at that point in time and what the assessment rate was. I mean, that's, that's up to them, so I'm not as concerned.
Uh, council or, uh, mayor Protem, you had lowered your hand. Did you have anything else you wanted to add before we go to a vote? Okay, uh, city clerk, could you please read back the amendment?
Absolutely happy to. Um, mayor Protem Melin moved to amend the metro district policy to require that the disclosure that is recorded with the county also contain a range of what the mils translates to into dollars.
Great, thank you. Council, that is the amendment. Uh, let's do a, a thumbs up would be to approve. A thumbs down would be to deny. Ready, vote?
The vote is four in favor with Mayor Valdez, councilmembers Eldrod and Milliman voting no, the motion carries.
Great, thank you. Uh, council, is there any more discussion or any other amendments? Councilmember Grove?
Yes, I have another amendment. Um, I move to amend the metro district policy to allow for refinancing of the loan or bond so long as it does not extend the term past the issuance of the original loan or bond without the expressed written consent of the City of Littleton.
Great, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Back here.
Uh, we have a second by the mayor Protem. Uh, council discussion, we'll start with, uh, councilmember Grove.
Uh, the intent of this is, um, to just make sure that if there's a, a bond amount, that it's not extended, but not to hamstring anybody from refinancing at a lower interest rate. So to make sure that the bond is not, they don't add to the amount without justification to the city.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Please government overreach.
We have councilmember Elrod?
What, um, so when issuing bonds, are they on certain terms and does that potentially preclude refinancing because you only have five years left or something like that? Um, is, could that, could that pose a challenge?
Theoretically, yes. I, I believe the intent of it is so that we don't start off with a thirty-year, you know, bond or a thirty-year loan, if we want to call it that. You know, I'll use those terms interchangeably. Um, you're basically securing the loan by, by the issuance of the bonds. Um, and if there's only five years, you know, left, yeah, I believe that was the intent, to make sure that a thirty-year is not going to become a sixty-year.
No, what I'm trying to ask is, um, if there's only five years left, may that actually preclude refinancing because you could not get a product. So interest rates go down, you want to refinance, want to save some money, but then you can't get a product that's only five years left, for example.
That's a possibility. I'm not sure.
Um, I, I guess that's kind of my point. I don't want to, um, again, hamstring an opportunity for refinancing, as Pam alluded to, um, if, and, you know, and it, I, I would just, Reed, can you, um, speak to, if they were to refinance and extend the term, how, if at all, that's addressed in this policy as far as of that go to the city, what? What do we have in place that we don't continuously have thirty years, fifty years, sixty years, seventy years, eighty years?
I'm, I'm sorry, was that a question for me?
It is. I'm trying to ask, is there something else in this policy that precludes a perpetual, perpetual debt essentially?
Um, no, definitely not. I mean, we have an orig, we have a limitation in terms of the bond, which is that, I believe, thirty-five years. Um, but that doesn't preclude someone from refinancing that, extending that.
Alright, any other questions? If not, we have an amendment on the table. Uh, city clerk, if you could please read the amendment?
Happy to. I move to amend the metro district policy to allow for refinancing of the loan or bond so long as it does not extend the term past the issuance of the original loan slash bond without the expressed written consent of the City of Littleton.
Great. Uh, council, a thumbs up would be to approve the amendment and a thumbs down would be opposed to the amendment. Uh, ready, let's vote?
The vote is four in favor with Mayor Valdez, councilmember Milliman and councilmember Driscoll voting no, the motion carries.
Great, thank you. We now have, uh, we're back to our main motion as amended. Any other discussion? Alright, uh, city clerk, could you read the main motion again, please?
Happy to. I move to approve the resolution authorizing the adoption of a metro district policy as amended.
Great, thank you. And council, a thumbs up is to approve and a thumbs down is to deny. Okay, ready, let's vote?
The vote is six in favor with Mayor Protem Melin, Melin voting no, the ca, the motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. Alright, that is it for that item, council. Thank you. We're going to move on to, uh, agenda item eight A. Uh, Sam, if you could please inform our audience how they can participate?
Thank you, mayor. Citizens wishing to speak during the public hearing tonight should please call six six nine nine zero zero six eight three three. And when prompted, enter the webinar ID nine two zero six nine six zero four nine zero nine. Please press star nine to raise your hand and be recognized. After the staff presentation, you will be recognized by the last three digits of your phone number. Speakers will have three minutes to address council on the public hearing topic. Thank you, mayor.
Great, thank you very much, Sam. Alright, we have ordinance number twenty-seven dash twenty twenty, an ordinance on second reading, amending the flood plain regulations contained in title ten, chapter six, to prohibit certain tents and makeshift structures in the flood plain and requiring free board for supporting utilities of manufactured homes in the flood plain. I will turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, mayor, council. I'm actually going to immediately turn it over to Carolyn Roan. She is our Water Resource Manager with the Public Works Department and she will make a presentation here this evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, and members of the public, I'm gonna, I'm trying to share my screen here, let me know if you can see that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Again, my name's Carolyn Roan, as Mark mentioned, I'm the Water Resource Manager, and part of my duties here is the city floodplain administrator. And tonight I wanted to talk to you about ordinance 27-2020, which is amending our floodplain regulations to prohibit tents and makeshift structures in the floodplain, and also requiring freeboard for supporting utilities of manufactured homes. So this ordinance update consists of two separate and unrelated updates. Like I just mentioned, we're prohibiting tents and makeshift structures in the floodplain areas, and we're also, the second piece is to revise our floodplain regulations to make sure that we meet the new FEMA community rating system requirements for freeboard. And it's just a very quick reminder, the community rating system is a volunteer program offered by FEMA to communities where they have their floodplain programmatic elements basically graded, and though that, depending on the grade that your city receives, you, your citizens qualify for certain reductions in their flood insurance premiums. And the city of Littleton is currently a class five, the lowest, the lower the number, the better the rating, it goes from nine to one. Okay, so the first topic is about tents and makeshift structures, and what we're discuss, what we're talking about here are temporary structures, primarily tents and other sort of temporary shelters that are put into floodplains without adequate sanitation facilities or flood evacuation plans. The main application of this are homeless camps and encampments from that portion of the population. Floodplains and the associated greenways and the denser vegetation that you find in floodplains are often utilized for this purpose because they're hidden away, or some privacy provided, but the floodplain areas carry a particular life safety risk. And that's what I'm summarizing here in this slide. During a flood event, of course, there's fast-flowing water that can engulf these, these encampments, and that can cause drowning or can cause collisions, because you may have floating trees and large objects in that floodwater that can collide with, with people. And that's the second one there. You also can, if you're floating along, not only drown, but you might hit the side of a bridge or something like that. The camp, you know, the encampments themselves, the floating debris that results from those also poses risks because it can clog bridges and culverts downstream, and therefore include, increase other flooding in other areas as a result of that. And not only that, but that floating debris causes pollution of the waterways. And then inadequate sanitation on these, at these facilities in general can introduce other harmful bacteria into the waterways. So why are we introducing this into the floodplain ordinances? Well, Mile High Flood District is recommending that all the jurisdictions in the metropolitan area do this as a regional approach to lessen this particular safety risk. They have, they have incorporated it into their own floodplain regulations, and they are asking all the other jurisdictions to do the same, just to have a very cohesive regional approach to this. And this is in particular, has been raised due to concerns in the Denver metro area with, with these sorts of developments, you know, within the Denver floodplains. To continue on this, Littleton already prohibits this kind of activity in a, in a very general sense in the building code. But Mile High Flood District is recommending that communities also incorporate specific language into their floodplain regulations as well as having that other general language. And as I recall, from one of the meetings that we, with, that they, that Mile High Flood District had, this is because in some communities, I believe the general prohibition on this behavior has been questioned legally, so they felt like perhaps if you have it in another location that's specifically tied to floodplain risk, that it's a little bit more defendable. And so the amended language for this in particular is contained in Title 10, Chapter 6, in Sections 8, 9, and 10. The second component of this update tonight talks about, is about freeboard. So the CRS program is requiring that supporting utilities for all structures in the floodplain, so like supporting, this is an example of a manufactured home on this slide, but any kind of homes that have supporting utilities, like maybe HVAC or electrical boxes, gas meters and that sort of thing, requires that they all be elevated above the floodplain elevation. We already have that freeboard requirement in our regulations, but we did have a clause in our regulations that exempted certain kinds of manufactured homes from this. So our update is simply just removing that exemption, so that it's clear that we are meeting that freeboard requirement in our regulations for all of these different kinds of structures. And just as a reminder, freeboard is that vertical distance between the floodplain elevation and a certain component of a building, in this case, we're talking about the supporting utilities, and that's what I'm drawing the arrow to there in the slide on the diagram, the little red vertical space. City of Littleton, as I mentioned, has a class five CRS rating, and this new requirement is mandatory in order to maintain a class nine or better. So if we want to maintain that class, this is something that we need to do. It's important to save residents and business owners on flood insurance premiums, and this particular edit applies to Title 10, Chapter 6, Section 16, Sections A and B, and associated references. So it is staff's recommendation to, in order to maintain our class five rating and to better protect residents from flood hazards, and to also support Mile High Flood District's regional approach for such protection, we recommend Council approve ordinance 27-2020. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Great, Council, do you have any questions at this time, or do you want to, we can go ahead and move right into our public hearing? So seeing no questions now, let's go ahead and open up the public hearing, it is 7:43. Sam, if you, again, remind the callers?
Thank you, Mayor. A reminder, citizens wishing to speak during the public hearing tonight who have not already gotten in the queue, please call 669-900-6833. When prompted, enter the webinar ID 920-6960-4909. Please stay on the line and press star nine to raise your hand and be recognized for public comments. There, we do have a caller in the queue, I just want to remind callers, if you are in the queue and would like to be part of public comment, please press star nine.
And our first caller?
Have been unmuted, caller 819, please begin speaking.
Hi, this is Pam Chapew, and I'm curious, we have a couple mobile home parks along the river, and I want to know how this affects them. I think that should be part of this presentation, does removing this exemption affect any of those homes?
Thank you very much, Pam. Sam, do we have any other callers?
Mayor, we have no other callers in the queue.
Okay, we will close the public hearing at nine, or at 7:45. Council, open it up to questions, or we can go into a motion. I have Councilmember Eldrod, your hand is up.
Thank you. Carolyn, if you could address the question asked by the citizen regarding the impact or how it would affect, in any negative way, the current residents along in our mobile parks right now?
Yeah, of course. So currently, there's a couple mobile home parks, as Ms. Chapew mentioned, one of them is maybe partially in the South Flat River floodplain at the south end by C-470, that's Woolhurst, little home park. And then there's another one that's a non-FEMA floodplain, and that's located along Range View Gulch, just north of Breckenridge, Breckenridge Brewery. And as I understand it, and I'll double check, but the exemption that we had pertains specifically to new mobile homes that are added into an existing, an existing mobile home park. And as I, as I recall, both of those mobile home parks are already fully developed out, and so it wouldn't apply to any of them. It would apply if any of those were to be removed, I suppose, and a new one added in, they would have to make sure that their supporting utilities meet that freeboard requirement.
I have a follow-up then to that question. Would it apply to any improvement that they're making? So what if they have to put a new air conditioning or whatever it may be? So what about improvements to their existing?
As I understand it, no, it would have to qualify as what's called a substantial improvement, so improvements that are 50% more value of the, of the existing structure, that's when they would have to implement it.
Good, thank you. Council, do we have any other questions? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I make a motion to...
Please.
I make a motion to approve, sorry, let me bring it up. An ordinance on second reading, amend in the floodplain regulations contained in Title 10, Chapter 6, to prohibit certain tents and makeshift structures in the floodplain, and requiring freeboard for supporting utilities of manufactured homes in the floodplain.
And we have Councilmember Driscoll on a second. All right, so a thumbs up will be to approve, a thumbs down is to deny. Council, let's go ahead and vote, vote.
The vote is seven in favor, the motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank you very much, Council. That does take us to the end of our meeting. There was a couple things that I wanted to bring up, that I forgot to bring up on the reports, if I just may quickly, that the Federal Boulevard in Bowles Project has been completed, and that was a part of the Tabor funds that the city citizens had voted for the city to go ahead and retain, as long as they did that project. So thank you for getting that completed, city manager.
Actually, I have some diagrams I'm going to share at the city manager comments of the study session, so yeah, I think we need to congratulate our staff for finally getting that, we've had a tough hurdle there, but I'll get into the details at the study session.
Oh, good, good, good. Well, with that, it is 7:49, and we do have a study session after that, so it's 7:49, so we will adjourn, but let's come back at 7:55. I'd like to open up the City of Littleton City Council Virtual Study Session for Tuesday, August 18th, 2020, the time is 7:56. Hello, Council, welcome back. Council, we have a couple items on our agenda tonight, and the way we're going to work the meeting, as I'd mentioned last week, as, as we do this, and we're trying to make it more effective for all of us, and for staff, as, as well as Council. So what, when we get to the questioning portion, what I would like to do is, similar to what we did last week, if we can, keep our questions section to questions. The reason for that is in part is that Councilmembers, they, they The reason for that is in part is that council members, they come up with a question, but if it kind of goes down a rabbit hole with the person before them with comments, it kind of puts them in a different position. So if we could, I would like the City Manager, when we get to comments, if you could keep track of comments and maybe give us a summary at the end, so that council members know that their comments were indeed heard by you and by staff.
Be happy to.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Let's see. So our first item that we're going to start with is 1A, it's ID number 20-209. It's the CARES Act. And there is quite a bit in this one, counsel, that we're going to be addressing. In fact, we're going to be giving direction. Of course, we don't vote, but we will be giving direction. And it's at least four items that I count that we will be giving individual direction on. It involves, number one, will be public health expense. And that's in the neighborhood of $610,000. And within that item, there's a couple of areas that we're going to hope to allocate money to. Another item that we're going to address separately will be the payroll expense. And that's about $208,000. And we'll be hearing from our finance director on that. Our third item, again, these are items that we're going to give direction on individually, but it's to facilitate compliance during this COVID-19. And that'll be $150,000. And then the balance is about, the fourth item will be about $20,000. So counsel, there will be, will be given at least direction on four different items. So if you can, let's try to stick to that. With that in mind, I will turn it over to the City Manager.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, counsel. So this evening, we have another update for the City Council on the CARES Act. And we've got Ashley Bolton, our Administrative Services Director, Tiffany Hooton, our Finance Director, and Keith Reaster, our Finance Director. The three of them are actually going to walk us through the four key parts that our mayor just kind of outlined. And so we're going to go through that. At the end of the meeting, I would like, or the end of the presentation, excuse me, I would like just to take a minute and update the council on the weekends on Main Street and some of the CARES Act funding that we may be allocating for this purpose. I just want to summarize that for council as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ashley Bolton and the staff and let them proceed.
Counsel, I'm going to bring up the presentation. All right, this presentation we have before you is the CARES Act. And as Mark mentioned, Ashley Bolton, myself, and Keith Reaster will be navigating through this presentation. The policy question that we have before council is related to four different areas that Mayor Valdez already mentioned. We are going to be asking for support from council to move forward with the Phase Three CARES Act use of funds. The total of these funds will be $988,000. And we will be going over these in detail throughout the presentation. So the purpose of the presentation is to, again, just kind of remind you what the CARES Act funds are. Go over the phasing plan and the prioritization that we used to come up with the phasing. And then we're going to give you an update on the council chamber reconfiguration project. And then we're just going to kind of review Phase One and Phase Two and go over some of the items that have already been approved to move forward and that we've already received monies from the CARES Acts Four. And then we're also going to provide a recommended action on Phase Three, which was the $988,000. And we will be asking council for support of that. So again, quickly, just on the CARES Act Fund. CARES Act was provided, CARES Act Funds were provided to populations of 500,000 or more. Arapahoe County and Jefferson County have provided a distribution to City of Littleton in the amount of about $4.4 million. A reminder that the counties are actual custodians of the funds, so they have fiduciary and reporting responsibilities to the US Treasury related to these funds. And they also have final determination on the eligibility of these expenditures. Both counties have defined reporting requirements that they have shared with all of the cities that they remitted these funds to. And we are aware of that and have been remitting throughout the months. The use of the CARES Acts, there were three explicit uses of the CARES Acts. They have to be necessary and incurred due to the public health emergency of COVID-19. They could not have been accounted for in our most recent budget that was approved as of March 27th, 2020. And they also have to be incurred and expended before December 30th. So when we first started down the journey of the CARES Act Funds, we wanted to create a phasing plan. We knew that we had been allowed $4.4 million, but we wanted to be strategic in how we were going to spend those funds. And so we proposed a phasing of the use of the funds. So on May 19th, the IGAs were approved by City Council. And on May 26th, we had our first discussion on the Phase One. In July, we did a budget appropriation to approve the full amount of the $4.4 million for expenditure. On July 17th, we talked about a Phase Two of the CARES Act. And then we also had a follow up related to Phase Two on July 28th. And we'll do a recap later in the presentation on Phase One and Phase Two, just as a reminder. And then earlier in August, we presented a Phase Three Business and Nonprofit Grants on August 4th. So one of the things that we wanted to make sure is that when we're looking at what expenditures we were going to spend the CARES Act monies on, we wanted to have a prioritization. And so we formed a group internally who gathered a number of projects that were potential to be used with CARES Act Funds. And we met to kind of discuss, you know, what the priorities are. We wanted to make sure that we're aligning with the council goals. And then we were also aligned with the reopening guiding principles. We wanted to include Littleton RISE objectives. And then we wanted to make sure that we weren't redundant in county or state initiatives, especially related to business grants. And then we also wanted to look for partnership opportunities, which is what we've been doing with some of the counties on some other business funding. And then, you know, we always wanted to make sure that we potentially had funds available in case there was a second wave, especially related to PPE or equipment that we might need. Sorry, apologize. So we have a potential CARES Act request summary. And this is just kind of a summary of things that we kind of have sitting on the side that we're looking at or going to look at in the future of any other potential phases for the CARES Act Funds. And so we've kind of split these into the categories that the county has provided to us. The public health expenses, payroll expenses. We want to make sure that we facilitate compliance with COVID-19. And then there's a category of other. And so we originally had a total of about $6.5 million that is still on our list that we're looking at for future potential uses. When we were reviewing that, we kind of came up with some alternative funding or other methods that we might be able to use instead of maybe the CARES money. And so when we dialed that back down, we came to about a $3.2 million total. And on this next slide is kind of what we call the remaining wish list. So these are the items that were on our original list that as soon as we understood the uses of CARES Act Funds, we wanted to put this list together so we could understand what projects or expenses that we were looking towards. So some of the things that we talked about were HVAC improvements. You know, we have the council chamber redesign that we've kind of broken up into separate phases. Expansion of the second floor hallway just to allow for social distancing. There's also some office furniture and some other redesigning here at the city center and then also at Geneva Lodge. And then providing a break room for our employees. Some of the other things that we talked about that we kind of discussed and worked with the county and, you know, we have a huge need for an ERP here at the city. And based on some of the issues and concerns that we've had to deal with the COVID-19 pandemic, you know, we were hoping that we might be able to use some of those funds to fund an ERP system. We did talk with the county and they were not as supportive of funding an ERP system. So we did remove that from our listing that we had originally. We have a number of cybersecurity-related items, which definitely as a result of COVID-19, this has become a clear focus of what we want to address with CARES Act Funds. And then also some camera upgrades to allow for contact tracing, digital signatures. You know, we don't have people on site, so they can't sign documents. And so we had to come up with some, we're looking to come up with some alternatives to signing documents. And then just some internal and Intranet support. We talked a little bit about personnel payroll expenses. This would be related to employees who, as a result of FMLA, were required to provide sick leave to them and in response to those FMLA changes. And then we also have the ability to pay for future miscellaneous personnel costs of people who are dedicated 100% to COVID-related items. And then we also wanted to make sure that if we had to quarantine employees and we were required to continue to pay them, that we had an opportunity to potentially use CARES money for that. And then the last one that we had was door security. And just again, making sure that our employees are secure, that the building is secure, that citizens are secure, and to prevent or allow them to enter the building as needed. And so when we were looking through some of these requests, we did find that, you know, there may be some other funding sources. So we did take a few of these off, such as the expansion of the second floor hallway. You know, we might be able to use impact fees for that rather than CARES money. And then also security camera upgrades, potentially at the library and museum. There may be some opportunity to use Conservation Trust Fund money. So we did remove those or identify other sourcing funds for those projects. And then I mentioned earlier the ERP system that we did remove from our original list. So after removal of those items, we do have about a $3.2 million list that we still have that we could potentially use CARES Act Funds on in the future. So I think with that, I'm going to go ahead and move into kind of an update on the city center remodel or the city council chambers and the community room. And I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to Keith Reaster, the Public Works Director, and he's going to kind of walk us through the next few slides related to the Littleton Center.
Hello, everybody. Want to make sure you can hear me, so that's good. The Littleton Center remodel, we've talked about this up to this point a little bit. So a little bit of background, the last time that we talked about this, discussion was a placeholder for about $990,000. And it was a placeholder since at this point in time, we had only gone through some preliminary design. The city council chambers were originally considered as part of the Littleton Center remodel, but because of limitations on impact fee funding and just sequencing, more than likely, we would have not have touched the council chamber for at least another two to three years, depending on funding at the earliest. And so it would have been further down in the phases. But with the CARES Act money and the availability of that, we really took a look at moving that forward with the CARES Act funding because as of right now, we do not have a public space that we can broadcast from and host a city council meeting from a social distancing standpoint. There is no facility in the city that can do that. So that's part of the genesis for this particular project. So our goals in a project, the revitalization of the council chamber product would be to create a socially-distanced council chamber to then in turn also move to the process of doing some ADA improvements, which are fairly significant in that room, as you all know, having hosted meetings there.
And then we did lose your presentation.
It's Tiffany's, so Tiffany's going to have to pop it back up there. Must be the craziness in the Aspen Room in that other picture that we saw. And then the, you know, the third thing that we've talked, Mark has talked to you about in the past is that we really have never had a city space that was available to the public to host events or to rent space to allow larger public engagement types of things and that kind of stuff. And so this remodel would actually allow that. And it would allow the council chamber to actually be separated from the rest of the building to allow a much more secure situation in that circumstance. We also, as you know, in this Littleton Center, are very short on meeting space as we've outgrown that over the last four decades. So Tiffany, if you want to pop along on the slide, that's great. So this is a, you know, really colorful diagram that I worked with our staff to try and explain where this funding all works. So along the left-hand side, there's $1.4 million for the council chamber remodel. Additional funding sources, which would have been set aside in parts related to the Littleton Center remodel include $100,000 in ADA funding. Annually, we put aside 200K in facilities management capital funding as part of the council chamber remodel to support the AV needs. Because obviously Tyler's important to this project and so is communications to get the message out. On a meeting basis, there's the PEG funds that are out there to, which would help us on the AV side. We also, in terms of the bigger Littleton Center remodel, the other things that would be moving forward, the second floor infill, which contextually, so you all understand what that is, is when you leave the council chamber, where the restrooms are immediately to the north, the area above that is structurally sufficient for us to add additional space there in that area up above, which would gain us another 700 square feet of space up there that can be reused for meeting space or the print shop or office space as well. We need to, we've considered taking a look at the solarium, which is the glass area adjacent to the council chamber. We also have to take a look at some issues related to security and the hardening of the building, including city attorney's office and the city manager's office. Although I've committed to read that we're going to move him into the basement once we dig it over there to put him in there. Additionally, we are taking over Geneva Lodge as a city-operated location beginning in January of 2021 as the second period of the 10-year leases, so 20 years concluding, ends at the end of this year. And so we are going to be reutilizing that space over there to move office, city operations in there. And it does need some work over there on the exterior. We've probably got $90,000 to $100,000 worth of work. And on the interior, we need to do some work as well. The building's not anywhere near ADA compliant, so we would have to address that as well. Other things that, you know, in the long-term design that are out there are, you know, basically moving the one-stop-shop permit counter to a location that's not in a hallway into a more, a space that works better for that as well as all of those other areas. We also need to deal with some office space. In the background of all this, the stuff that you don't see that's behind the scenes, like the HVAC systems and the mechanical and electrical systems, most of those have not been touched from an upgrade standpoint for three decades, limiting our ability to change office space around as well as the ability to, you know, effectively put energy efficiency in and those kind of things. So we're going to be addressing those over time, but those are not things that we can address with impact fees or CARES Act Funds. You can flip forward on that, Tiffany, if you want. So I wanted to show you some pictures. I think most of you have seen these. So this is an aerial view of the existing walls of the council chamber. In the new remodel configuration, the giant pit in the center would be filled in. And the dais would kind of be in a similar situation where it is now. And it would be stationary in order to accommodate ADA accessibility to the, to the dais itself. But as you can see, we would have movable seating across the floor to gain substantial additional seating in the council chamber to start with. Additionally, we'd be adding security access and an additional door on the north side of that space as well. If you could flip to the next one, Tiffany. Within that model, we would also consider the installation of a movable door closing space, which is the hash line that you see in the center, that would allow us to split this space into two multifunction conference rooms to be used on a daily basis throughout the Littleton Center and that kind of thing. So that's what you see there. This is still, we're a little bit further along in design now, but we're still working at a rapid pace to try and, you know, we have to build this thing by the end of the year to use CARES Act money. And our design firm and construction manager, GC, have And our design firm and construction manager, GC, have been very, very willing to work with us to get these kind of things done. So that's kind of a broad overview. In addition to all this, an upgrade of the AV systems and lighting throughout the building would be significant. This is some of the stuff that's in there. Demo the FFNE, well, chairs are actually already out of there right now. Most of the walls would be furred out and drywalled as opposed to the black or black, the brown bricks that you see. We didn't be installing a drop ceiling to enhance acoustics and lighting controls in the room. We'd be adding sound attenuation. There would be significant upgrades to the AV technology. And in order to really make it happen, we also have to really attack some of the HVAC stuff. But that would lay the foundation for additional work as we move forward to the rest of the building. So that's just kind of a quick overview of the space that we are talking about. And from our perspective, the decision we're asking counsel from a direction standpoint is we're kind of at a point where we, we have to be in a no-go-go situation to make this happen by the end of the year. So we're really asking about, you know, this 1.4 million to move forward with this part of the project. One thing I do want to highlight is we put that 990 in there as a placeholder. The initial estimate for this work came in at $2.1 million. And we have since worked with our internal staff and our design and construction teams to try and value-engineer that down to the 1.4 million, which is where we think we can accomplish, we believe we can accomplish all the work that I've highlighted right here and make this the space that we need and a future-looking space as an anchor for the Littleton Center and the community going forward. So that's what I've got on that. So hopefully, there's no slides after this that I don't know about, Tiffany, that you want me to talk about, but feel free to move forward.
No, you're good, Keith. Thank you. So the last thing that we kind of wanted to talk about was our Phase Three recommended actions. And I mentioned earlier, there's 988,000 that we have identified as priority for use of CARES Act. Keith has already talked about the council chamber redesign, and we're calling this a Phase Two of that redesign. As he mentioned, originally, we put a placeholder of $990,000. So we are asking for another 410,000 so that we can make the total project for, $1.4 million. The other item that falls under public health expense is door security additions and improvements. And I'm going to let Ashley kind of touch on what those are.
Good evening, Council. Yeah, our, our door security system is another primitive system that has been in need of an upgrade. And even just this summer alone, we have been experiencing failures and system outages around our door security. But I think more importantly, it's important for you to understand that our library currently doesn't even have a door security system at all right now. So we have no way to track which employees are in the building. And knowing that the safety of our employees is paramount, we would like to look at investment to actually implement a door security system there so that we can aid in tracking where they are and also help with social distancing. I think right now, they even queue up in the morning to be let in with a key. So that would be what this investment is for, as well as anything remaining from this investment, would be to be doing some needed upgrades to help improve some of the existing security components that are failing in our other buildings. We just had another one at the courthouse this week. We had one at the museum last week. The week before, we had two at the city center. So it's kind of been a constant theme just due to an outdated system that, like our other infrastructure improvements around here, needs to be updated. So we'd like to ask for some CARES Act funds to be dedicated to those two pieces, repairs and the library system implementation.
And then the second one is related to payroll expenses, and this is unemployment costs. So as a result of COVID-19, there have been a number of employees or previous employees who unfortunately don't have a job right now and have been filing for unemployment. We did get our second quarter report from the state recently. And just for the second quarter, our total unemployment cost was about $86,000. Now, that's for one quarter of 2020. Fortunately, the state has a program where they have gotten some funding to help offset some of that cost. So the state is intending to pay for 50% of that, which will still leave us with about $43,000 for our city costs related to unemployment. And unemployment costs are directly related to COVID, and they are an eligible use of CARES Act funds. So we would like to allocate $208,000, which is an estimate of where we think we might be by the end of 2020 related to unemployment costs for the second, third, and fourth quarter. And then the third item listed is to facilitate compliance. And there are a number of, again, IT technology improvements that Ashley will talk about.
Yeah, so these next three items are really around changing how we have been forced, really, to, to work differently, work remotely, as well as social distance when we are here in the office. The first is around Wi-Fi improvements. And knowing that we have been working towards enabling our employees with laptops so that they can socially distance, they can work remotely. But as you see from, actually even this room, a lot of our walls are actually brick and glass, which really make it hard to do hard-wired network drops. And so improving our Wi-Fi, adding more wireless access points around our buildings will allow our employees to actually work in different areas without having to have a hard-wired network drop. So that's the Wi-Fi improvement ask. The next is around a service management application. And as we're looking to form our administrative services group, and Tiffany and Noel, our HR director, also looking to form a procurement or purchasing division within administrative services, we've been talking how we actually serve our internal employees. And a lot of what we used to do was actually walk-ups. If you've been here at the city center, we actually have a lot of walk-up counters. And that's really how we did a lot of our work before, which is no longer an option for us with social distancing and, and more remote enablement. So consequently, as we've been talking, we've realized a lot of the requests and how we actually are trying to serve our employees are coming through emails, coming through calls. And this is becoming very burdensome, as well as inefficient, to try to adequately serve our employees in terms of these requests that we get for HR asks, finance asks, procurement asks. So we're looking for an application to help manage those requests, track them, get data points, do trending so we can see peak volumes and learn about what our employees are needing, as well as try to implement service-level agreements, or what is termed as an SLA, in terms of trying to actually, if we can track this stuff, give our employees an expectation of how quickly we can turn around items for them to help make everybody more efficient. The last one is around office setup for remote work. And as we are having more employees work remotely, we've been getting asks for getting things like ergonomic keyboards at home, desk chairs, a printer to use. And so we've been talking, and I know, I think Arapahoe County has also been looking at doing this too, but talking about making an investment for if employees determine longer term that they would like to become a remote worker, could we make an investment in terms of a one-time office setup, for example? So that's what that ask is for. You want me to just jump into the last one, too?
Sure.
Yeah. The last one is related, actually, to the, the hosting, for example, that Tyler's been doing on this call. And knowing that we're having more and more Zoom meetings around our boards and commissions calls, and knowing that we have one Tyler who can't be here all of the time, looking to see if we could get some consulting help to help us with some of the moderation for all of these Zoom calls that we're looking to have, assuming that this fall will continue and this will be kind of, I guess, our new normal for, for quite some time.
Okay, that's the list of our Phase Three recommended actions. And now we just kind of want to recap what we've done over the past few months related to CARES Act. For Phase One, we requested 1.182 million dollars. And some of the things included in this were screening guards for outward-facing public operations, PP&amp;E thermometers, decontamination for police vehicles. We needed a phone system upgrade that we have actually already implemented, and it is up and running. One of the largest things is trying, is allowing our employees to work remotely. So we did have to get laptops for a number of employees so that they're able to do that. And then we also included Phase One and Phase Two of the business grant program. And then we had intended on using a Phase Three related to rental assistance, which could also be used for business grants. And then we did request $100,000 related to weekends on Main. And all of those have been approved by the county. And we have already received a majority of that reimbursed from Jefferson County and Arapahoe County. Now, Phase Two included a number of other items. It was the $990,000 related to the council chamber redesign. We had a number of AV upgrades that were related to what we're doing right now, the Zoom room. And then we also have some cybersecurity and email filtering that we really needed to implement, just with the number of employees who are working and using their own personal Wi-Fi connections. And we just needed some additional security there. And then we're working on some improvements at the courthouse. And then we also did include the $200,000 that was recently discussed with council related to nonprofit funding. And tonight before you, we have Phase Three, which is our ask of council. So again, additional money for the redesign of the chambers, some security additions, Wi-Fi, service management apps, remote setup for office work from home, the unemployment costs, and then call moderation related to this video that we're doing right now. And so the total ask that we have up to date is $3,690,000 of our 4,409,413. So this would allow us to continue and have $719,413 remaining. And again, the fiscal impacts, 4.4 million. And then I just went over Phase One, Two, and Three. And again, this allows us to keep $719,413 for future use related to COVID. So counsel, before you, the policy question is, does counsel support moving forward with Phase Three CARES Act use of funds? And this is, again, is the $988,000 that we have been talking about. The public health piece is 610,000, payroll expenses 208,000, to facilitate compliance, 150,000, and then our 20,000 related to video moderation. And counsel, those are all of the, that's all the presentation we have tonight. And so if you have questions, we are certainly here to answer any that you might have.
All right. Well, thank you very much for the presentation. And again, counsel, it basically boils down to four items that we're going to give direction on. Why don't we go ahead and open up with the public health expenses categorized as? And that's for $610,000. It involves the city council chamber redesign, as well as security addition and improvements. Counsel, do we have any questions or comments, questions? We're going to stick to questions at this point. Do we have any questions? And Mayor Protem?
I guess this question is for Keith. You mentioned security. The council chamber has always struck me as a particularly unsecure room. The solarium exit's not very accessible. And besides that, there's really only one main exit in and out. I suppose if you count the sort of egress to the community room, maybe that's one and a half. But what are some of the security upgrades that we're going to see with this remodel?
Having been through a few council chamber remodels, I know Mark has as well, in the, in the diagram that you saw, we're going to be adding additional exits that are very clear on the north side, that would kind of come out sort of across from where the men's restroom is over then, that would then exit out, exit out of the building at that point. Additionally, the, the doors through the solarium area are going to, to change to allow us to have actual exit access through that. I mean, right now, basically, it's a storage area. So we're going to add a second exit over there in addition to the main council chamber doors. And then eventually, one of the concepts for the entire remodel would be that the community room would actually become the new entrance to the entire Littleton Center building as a whole. That would allow that to, that to provide another full exit to the exterior. Putting an additional exit door through either of the walls, the brick walls that are existing there, would be a pretty significant expense at this point. You know, and the other part right now is, is that with that submerged floor, it makes, you know, the security issues even more significant. So leveling the floor, allowing freer, freer movement throughout the space will also help as well. Additionally, as we look to the bigger part of the building, this portion of the building itself would be secured off from the rest of the building, hardening that as well in the process. So those are some of the primary things that are in there, as well as other, some more improved, security improvements, which will be built into the space.
Mark, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, I think just adding to what Keith is sharing, I think one of the other issues we want to look at is the dais itself. I think that's been an issue that's been raised by multiple councils since I've been here. So I know Keith and I visited about that. So we would like to look at what are more typical protection systems for the dais.
Great, thank you. We have council member Elrod and then me. Go ahead.
We're, we came in with an initial, an initial estimate of 990,000, a million dollars. Now, we're at 1.4. So what is it that we're getting incrementally for that 1.4 that wasn't considered in the 1 million?
I guess that question's for me. So, you know, basically, as I said earlier, the 990 was a placeholder. Because when we really started this discussion on the council chamber remodel, there was nothing from a design perspective, because this would have been way further down from a construction and design standpoint. So we completely flip-flopped our approach with our two contracting partners to try and come up with a design. So at first blush, we took a quick look at it just based on square footage and knowing what goes into construction. We then needed to follow that with the backhouse investigation related to electrical, AV, HVAC systems and that kind of stuff. And as I said, that initial estimate came in at 2.1 million. And so we've been able to bring that down to the 1.4, which will allow us to accomplish the social distancing, the enhancement of the public space, some of the security items that the Mayor Protem touched on, as well as the AV aspects of the room, and, and also the FFNE, the furniture fixtures and equipment. So we're going to get that, part of that additional value is, is, a lot of it is the backhouse. You know, initially of the 2.1 million, 785,000 of that was HVAC alone, because the systems are so outdated. So we've been able to really dive into the details of that platform to provide as much energy efficiency as possible and make that work, but also set ourselves up for future work in the rest of the building. So that's kind of what we're getting for the 1.4.
Let me ask it a different way then. We had to, if, so what would we lose? So if, what would we lose if we had to do this, if we only had a million dollars to do this? What would you have to cut out?
I don't think that we could do, we would be hard-pressed to do additional lighting, electrical, ceiling improvements in any HVAC if we cut this down to 990,000. Basically, what we could do was take care of the pit, the furniture fixtures and equipment. We would probably have to abandon the split wall. And we really would be hard-pressed to do any significant improvements to the AV. And secondly, we'd end up going in there and tearing the ceiling up of the room again when we started to do HVAC in the rest of the building. So if, if we're going to ramp that down to under a million dollars, you're just going to see, most of it's going to be, you know, just basically refreshing the, the space, filling in the pit, adding the furniture fixtures and equipment. And in future, you won't, in the future, you're going to see us have to go back in there and actually tear out, we'll have to pull some of that work back in order to do additional work in the rest of the building related to electrical and mechanical systems.
Great, thank you. All right. I'm going to move on to me. I have two questions at this point. So the, the entrance to the entrance and exit for city council meetings is the same as it'll be for folks coming into the building to do city business?
In the first initial setup, yes. And in, as we look forward to the continuing projects in the Littleton Center, the, the access point, we're looking at changing the overall entrance. So if, if you're asking really a question, Mayor, about can we have a completely separate entrance for council to the, to the council chamber? can we have a completely separate entrance for council to the, to the council chamber versus the public access point? We can certainly make that happen um with the additional doorway space that's going to be on the west of the building that, that's going to be added that currently does not exist. So that certainly is something that we can make happen.
Okay, then the other, the second question, the solarium or storage area, as you call it, that used to be for uh storage of loner bikes for staff to uh to get out on during the day. Is that, that no longer taking place?
Oh, no, that's still in there along with the several other things. Um, I can say that we, they are not getting a lot of use. And one of our, our discussions uh related to the overall Littleton Center as a whole is, you know, how over time do we increase um the ability for us to add some wellness space into that building for our employees? Um, we'd love to have some additional uh bike commuter facilities where uh, you know, forward, forward moving organizations that, you know, have planned in space like that, they have some bike rack storaging for employees and places to store things. And that's a place we'd like to get to eventually. But my guess is we wouldn't be able to touch some of that stuff until um our friends in Fire Station 11 um move on to other quarters somewhere else in the city.
Great, great, thanks very much. We'll go to council member Millman and then Grove. Kelly.
Thank you so much for putting this presentation together. It's um super helpful.
Kelly, it can barely be heard, Kelly.
Oh my God, not can you hear me?
You are, you got that quiet voice.
I'm sorry, I usually don't. Um, thank you for putting this um report together. Uh, I, I really appreciate all the work that went into it. Um, one question kind of tie, feedbacks onto Scott's question about the security door, specifically at the library, how is that going to work? And then also, um, second question, it pertains more to public health. Um, as you have more people coming into the city center um for these meetings or et cetera, um, do you, have you, do you anticipate more um like terminal cleans of the building? Or, you know, an increase in the, in the class of um, you know, keeping it, keeping it Corona free?
Uh, I'll pass the question on the, you know, just basically the security doors to Ashley here in a second. But we've already planned into our operations additional cleaning operations. Um, during the course of the pandemic up to this point, uh, we have worked with other parts of the organization where we've had some furloughed employees um or part-time employees that we moved in essence be day stewards in the building to help us uh add some of that additional space. And so we're, we're trying to figure out how we plan that into future space. Additionally, our, our facilities team is really, you know, one of the things we're focusing on is how do we um, you know, utilize some of the new tools that are out there in the marketplace to allow us to really reduce potential contamination throughout the building on an ongoing basis as well as at access points.
Great, did I take care of both your questions?
Uh, I'm curious now about the security door at the library, or the security system.
Yeah, so I think, Kelly, we're looking to try to mimic what we have here at the city center where the library would be open during business hours for patrons to come in. But earlier hours, we would actually have them locked and would allow our employees to come and go and also be able to um consequently identify who is actually in the building as well as allow Tim and his team to secure different areas and allow access just like we do here at the city center. But in terms of the patrons, it would function similar to what we do here pre-COVID when the city center was open during, you know, normal business hours.
City manager, did you want to add?
Yeah, Mayor, just um, maybe just kept stepping back for a second here. When we look at the Littleton Center, you know, this facility was built in the seventies. One of the original goals here through the acquisition of Geneva Village area was that the thought was that one day we would expand the Littleton Center by mirroring the building and over into that area. Um, I do not see that as practical. My view that this building that we have for the Littleton Center is probably gonna be our city hall for decades to come. There has been some discussion, I know, in the community about maybe looking for something else for a city hall. Again, I just don't see that in the cards, especially where we're at financially. Though I think I've challenged the staff to try to find ways to maximize the opportunities within the existing building, the existing footprint. And I think um that has, what I'm hoping is coming across to the council here this evening is we're trying to maximize the opportunities in this existing building and not look to some of the solutions that were discussed in the past.
Great, thank you. We have council member Grove and then uh Mayor Protem. Council member Grove.
I have two questions for Keith. Looking at the two diagrams that you have here, one where city council, where we have citizens, and then one where you have the meeting space, do you actually take all those seats and put them somewhere or and remove them, or how does that work?
Yeah, they're, basically, they're chairs. And so, you know, I, I mean, it's just, if you think of any traditional meeting space that you would go into from a modern perspective, if you're attending a conference meeting or something, y- you have movable chairs with stackable storage space. Obviously, the chairs that are in there for a council meeting are gonna be used in the smaller meeting rooms as well. Um, but you, you have that setup and the FFNE in there so that you can readily move that, take care of it, um, and those kind of things to, to accommodate those kind of changes pretty readily.
Okay, that makes sense. And the other question, it's a dais. Are we six feet apart from our co-councils? Is that the way that is working?
You're all gonna have to stretch your arms out to measure the difference between everybody. So um those longer arms will be farther apart. No, I mean, that's part of um the process of trying to settle on, that's part of where we're working with our, our architectural firm and our contractor firm right now to identify the best options for that um as we would do it. Obviously, the dais we have right now is not going to be the dais. Um, and we've looked at, you know, I've been in some other places where we've had mobile dais so that you can move it, or the dais that potentially we would look at would have some ability to split and move a little further, further apart if necessary to accommodate that. The other part of that, that one of the biggest issues with social distancing in the current chamber, which goes to some of the stuff we've talked about with AV work, is that we can't social distance you in the room right now and get you all on camera. And the last thing we want to do is have y'all have GoPros out there, so, you know, you know, part of our, a part of our AV work here is to not only modernize the technology that you have available to you and projections and all that, but to allow us to have a much better ability to present television out of the room, which will then enhance our ability, for example, to have it as a study session space as well. Um, to, to enhance the TV experience on that side too.
So they could be uh far apart and then maybe eventually um if there's a new normal that goes back to something like the old normal, we could push them back together.
Absolutely, flexibility, as you, the movable chairs and all that, flexibility is critical to the success of the space, both in the short and the long term.
Thank you.
And if we could go to uh the Mayor Protem.
I have a couple of questions as well. The first is, um, we've always used the council chamber to display art that's important to the community and also uh certain civic installations, like I think uh the um relationship we have with Bega Australia, I think, had some kind of installation reflecting that. Is Keith, is that um sort of being considered in the remodel that we would be able to sort of professionally uh give, give some of this art pride of place? And rotate it over time and so on?
Certainly, you know, I mean, already the art that we have in the Littleton Center comes from the city's collection. And so actually, we, we've had, you know, the, uh, our museum staff involved in this discussion early on, um, even before this council chamber discussion came up, because we have substantial art pieces which are currently built into the structure. Um, as you come into the, the egg, to the entrance on the uh east side and also right outside of the area where my office and the public works offices, you have built-in murals. So, you know, we've had, we've worked with them since the beginning to, how do we accommodate those types of things? And then, you know, secondly, actually, one of the things I'm kind of looking forward to is, is if we go with a more traditional gypsum drywall in, in the room, that's going to allow us to have a much more flexible space related to hanging art and, and to moving it around as opposed to limitations that are currently posed by the brick walls that are there um and the inability to hang things and that kind of stuff. So I, I think it's gonna really enhance the opportunity for that.
And my second question is, it sounds like your estimate for the cost of renovating the council chamber was, was created in consultation with a contractor. But for the rest of the uh numbers that we're talking about, um, including those sort of library security, how were those numbers arrived at? And obviously, I, I want to avoid a situation where we get to December 30th. We're out of time to spend the money. We're midstream on a project and we're going, oh, it's actually gonna cost more.
Um, the other items I'll, I'll toss over to Ashley and Tiffany specifically. For the Littleton Center, um, even before the CARES Act, we had gone out for an RFQ um earlier this year for the selection of both an architectural firm and a construction manager GC firm um to work on the Littleton Center remodel with the 1.9 million dollars that was already planned. So um since day one, um, they've been willing to pivot with us on this um and really have brought a lot of expertise and knowledge to the table. And um one of the things that has been really great is, besides that working relationship, is their ability to answer the question of can we build this by December 30th? What is functionally capable of doing by then? And, and that's been really important. Um, and the ability to almost do this as a design build project um is really enhancing our ability to deliver that as opposed to the traditional design bid build arrangement that we might have in past projects here. So um the other uh questions, I'll pass over to Tiffany and, and Ashley.
Yeah, Mayor Protem, on the library security piece, we had actually, um, prior to my arrival in 2018, um, had had ProSec, who is our security company, actually come in and give us an estimate for implementing a door security camera system over at the library. The estimate came in, I believe, at 198,000, but it also included a security camera upgrade. So we figured with the cost of inflation, taking the security pieces out, the 200,000 by all means should definitely well cover us for implementing the security system at the library. And hopefully, taking the security camera piece out of it will allow us some extra to do some of the much-needed repairs at some of our other buildings. So that's where we came up with that 200K.
Thank you. Did I take care of that, Scott?
Well, the other items on the list, I suppose I'd like to ask the same question when we get there.
Okay, yeah, good, thank you. Uh, city manager, did you have something you wanted to add?
Just real quick, Keith touched on it here, but I just wanted to point out a similarity here in the approach for the remodel of the council chambers. We use uh the, the same CMGC approach with the fire station at Trailmark. And in, in essence, you establish a guaranteed maximum price. And that's what protects the city. So that is a very different delivery system as opposed to the traditional design. Then you go out to a bid and then you work through change orders. So we're trying to avoid that. Both Keith and I have had extensive experience on this front. And we, in any remodel, you always go through the CMGC approach to get the guaranteed maximum price.
Great, thank you. We'll go to council member Elrod, uh, unless, unless anyone else has a question. Council member Elrod, if you could start with your question and then maybe if you have any comment after that, you get your response. Go ahead, we'll start comments.
Um, I still have a several questions. I'll ask a, a question regarding the um council chamber right now, but I have questions on other areas. You let me know how you want to handle that, Jerry.
Yeah, well, right now, we'll stick to council chambers are, are main.
So with the council chamber, you um, you just reminded us that what we had originally approved was, or city center remodel was 1.9 million. Um, and now, let's just say, 1.4 million of that is being dedicated to the council chamber. So um that to me sounds like we will either significantly reduce the scope for the other areas, or we can expect an incremental ask for what didn't get done and that it will cost more. What, what can we expect?
Sorry, I muted myself there for a second. Um, actually, the funding, let's go back through the funding process here. The 1.9 million dollars that was set aside for impact fees was planned for the Littleton Center remodel. And the council chambers would not have been touched during that process. The 1.4 million that's in the CARES Act funding is available um as this one-time funding that will go to the, the council chamber remodel, allowing us to use the 1.9 million dollars for the other work in the building that is still yet to be designed and planned. So what we're actually doing is taking the 1.9 million and, and really making it, you know, we're going to 3.2, wait a minute, hold on, doing my math there, 3.3 million. So we're really supplementing the 1.9 with the 1.4 and adding that to the available pot. And that 1.4 would not have been available to use on the building before. Um, so it, it's really in addition to that.
Um, that's not how, I, so I, I don't remember that being the case. Jerry, Carol, you guys were here um when we approved that 1.9 million. That I was under the impression that included the council chambers. Do you guys?
I don't recall.
I'll, I'll, I'll go back to that. You know, we've said from the beginning that there is a limited, the 1.9 million dollars is not just money that can be used for anything. It's impact fee money, so it's limited to capacity issues, first of all, to start with. So that limits the potential usage. And so the ability to spend that within the council chamber is still somewhat limited under the impact fee constraints. Um, and what we've said from the beginning is that the goal of the design process at this time was not to just design Phase One, but also to, at least at some level, design Phases Two, Three, and Four, so that as we moved forward in the future, we knew where we needed allocate money over multiple years in order to accommodate the long-term needs in the building, which as Mark said, we're, we're not going anywhere anytime soon. And so, you know, one of the places we haven't been is having a facilities master plan with good design work to allow us to plan for those capital investments over time.
Good. And, and Karina, before you get to your comments, I know uh council member Driscoll wants to ask a question. He hasn't had a chance yet, but if you have, do you have another question? Karina? Okay, cool, thank you very much. Uh, council member Driscoll?
I'm ready for comments. I'm ready to.
You're ready to start your comments? Oh, yeah, then let's go, I'm ready for comments too, go ahead.
Yeah, let's look, I, I, I think staff's doing a great job, let's move forward.
Great, thank you. Uh, who else would like to comment? Uh, Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I think this is a thoughtful set of proposals. I'm, I'm happy to move forward with it.
Great. All right, let's go to council member Elrod.
Um, so as, as it relates to the council chamber, I, you know, I think we discussed this enough to recognize it, it is what it is. Um, and, and I'm, you know, all for making the better investment for the long term than just some short-term remodel. So um I'm in support of the incremental ask of 400,000 on top of the 990 that was already earmarked.
Thank you. Uh, let's go to council member Fay. She may have stepped away. Let's go to, oh, there she is.
I'm here, I'm here, no comment.
Uh, are you, uh, any comment that you, we're making our comments as far as are we, do we want to move forward with Phase Three for the?
Oh, is that what we're doing? That was not clear to me. Um, I thought we were talking. Okay, yes, I'm in favor of moving forward.
Thank you. All right, do we have council member Grove? You have any comment, what would you like to do?
Uh, I agree with moving forward.
Great, thank you. We have council member Millman.
I agree with moving forward too, thank you.
Great, thank you. And then for me, I'm absolutely in favor of moving forward because I'm talking to other mayors of other jurisdictions. Some have actually gone back to live meetings and then returned to Zoom for security reasons where they, they were getting some threats and things like that. So it, it looks like we're all in favor of moving forward to Phase Three for the public health expenses. Karina, did you have one more thing?
I, I did, because I was under the impression we were just commenting on the council chambers. So you're asking about Phase Three, which, it was the 900,000 additional?
Uh, this was uh for the public uh health expenses, which is the 610,000 dollars, which was the, is basically the council chamber and the security doors, that kind of thing.
Okay, so it's just for that, okay?
Correct.
I would that.
Okay, cool, all right. Okay, city manager, you have your direction on that? On that particular item?
I do, on that uh public health expense, yes, I do.
Yeah, I, I, it seemed pretty straightforward. And on council, the other, I think the other three items would be pretty straightforward. So we had the payroll expenses of uh 208,000 dollars. And I, I believe y'all heard what it was for. It was for unemployment-type costs that the city has taken on. Uh, does anybody have any questions? We'll start with council member Elrod.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, actually, I want to take a step back on the 3.2 million that you identified, Tiffany. That is still like a running list of items that you would like to use. But we But we only have 1.7 million left, of which we're deciding on 900,000 now. So. That 3.2 million is obviously not um, accessible. We, we don't have enough money. We don't have 3.2 million. So. What, what, what does that intend to represent for us? I guess I'm not sure why that's being shared with us if we only have 1.7.
Uh, Tiffany, did you hear her question? Okay, it was, came, for me, it came through a little garbled.
Yes, I did. Um, the intention was just to provide the list of, you know, originally we had talked about, we had nine to 10 million dollars of asks. Or potential asks of CARES money. And so we just wanted to kind of show you uh, some of the other things that we are looking at or contemplating. Uh, to potentially use for the remaining 700,000 dollars. And so that's why we just wanted to share that with you. So you can see the total list of uh, nine to 10 million that we started with.
Great. All right, thank you. Uh, Mayor Protam, oh, sorry, go ahead.
So understanding that a little bit better then. Um, I, I can't bring up my granicus right now because I'll lose you guys. There was the. Um, internal self-service tools essentially, um, Ashley, that you shared with us. What category did that fall under?
We had it under facilitate compliance, which was the workforce enablement for remote, remote work.
Is it what we're talking about right now?
No, that'll be our next item.
Not yet.
Next. Okay, I'll hold my question.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protam?
Was it, was there any thought given, I'm just thinking out loud, to um, the possibility of a sick leave bank? Uh, I'm just thinking of those members of our staff who can't work remotely. Police officers in a lot of cases and so on. And if those folks even get a cold, right, there's going to be. Really a requirement probably that they sort of isolate until they're feeling better. And I think. They could run out of sick leave pretty quickly and it might be helpful to them to, you know, and to the city. Uh, to help them feel like it's appropriate and they're not going to lose income by staying away if they're feeling unwell.
Good question. Uh, city manager, where, did you want to address that?
I, I can jump in on that.
I think Mark has raised his hand, but go ahead.
Yeah, so we, as um, as an organization, we actually have been evaluating um. Carryover of vacations specifically. We have a policy that caps that at a certain amount of hours. And it's different for the uh, police patrol versus the general employee. So we've been. Working through HR and the city attorney's office, looking at some policies that would help protect the employees. Recognizing that they're in this environment now, they really can't take vacations. And so we're looking for ways to kind of. Protect them and carry over a little bit more. Uh, in essence, a cushion for them into the next couple of years. So we haven't quite formalized that, but I'd be more than happy to share that with council. But we've had a similar thought to Mayor Protam about how can we protect our employees? Uh, in the next several months.
So I, I would also add that there was a change to the FMLA specifically as a result of COVID. And so uh, before in the past, you've had to work with foreign organization for at least a year before you were entitled to FMLA. Um, now there is uh, changes to the FMLA which allows for individuals who just started last week whose. Whose children, um, if their school gets closed down or if they are exposed to COVID. Um, for the city to actually pay them for a couple of weeks. So there are some protections already in place.
Did, did you have a follow-up, Scott?
There any um, could the CARES Act money be used for funding a sick leave bank?
Yeah, so I was just going to add that one of the things that's still on our list is uh, related to that specific uh, question that you're mentioning, the FMLA sick leave. Um, so it is an eligible expense for CARES Act funds. And you know, we do still have it on the list. And uh, as we get, as schools start opening and uh, there's a potential that. Employees might need to use that. Um, we haven't had a high use of that yet. Um, but we potentially could. So we definitely want to keep that in mind. And that's uh, definitely on my forefront uh, for the FMLA piece of that.
Great. Okay, thanks. Great. All right, thank you. Council, any other questions regarding the payroll expense? I seen, anybody have any comments they'd like to make at this point? All right, well, let's just go around the horn here. We'll just uh, again, it'll just be a, a, a quick yes or no. Uh, we'll, we'll start, start with council member Milliman. Are, are you okay with moving forward on that item? Great. She's a, a yes. Uh, let's go to council member Grove.
Yes.
Council member Elrod?
Yeah.
Uh, council member Fay?
Yes.
Uh, council member Driscoll?
Yes.
Uh, Millen, Mayor Protam?
Yes.
Yep, and, and I as well. Great, that takes care of that. So we'll move on to our third item, which is the facilitate the compliance, which is for 150,000 dollars. Then involves mainly the, it looks like the Y5, uh, some service management and some remote setup. So it's all 150,000. Uh, we have any questions on that, council member? We'll start with council member Elrod.
Um, so on this, I really like the idea of that self-serve, um, the internal self-serve giving um, greater access to um, our employees. So I, I would like to see, and I don't know, um. To what degree we're ready for this, more of that self-service also for our, our citizens. Um, again, as you know, we've had to limit access to our staff. Um, we've all learned to work very differently. There's a lot of efficiencies to be gained there even in the long term. Um, what are you considering as far as self-serve tools as well for our citizens? Um, I did see that Denver community um, development and planning that is expanding their. Um, their permitting process to take, to do a lot more um, remotely and self-serve than um, the, the face-to-face. Ashley, do you have any plans on that?
Yeah, actually, Karina, with our go-live um, of, of track at nine back in June, we went live with a handful of permits just to kind of take an agile approach of things to. Release a few permits first, try to fine-tune things and then basically come back with another round of permits. And so we've got a phase two planned. That's actually already been budgeted for outside of CARES Act. That we're going to be looking to roll out the remaining permit types that we've got left. Um, we do have some, just some precursor or prerequisite work that John Schumacher, our chief building official. Is looking to do to make sure before we start implementing our phase two. That we have uh, our ducks in a row about some new things that we've been learning. So we actually um, as part of our council work plan update, are trying to get our dates and milestones around. The remaining rollout of the rest of our permit types. Um, so that will be coming. And again, we had already budgeted for that. And hence is not eligible for CARES Act funds.
Thank you. Council member Milliman?
Just a question for Mark. Um, do you know about how many of your employees will be um, working from home more longer term?
We do not. We've started an internal discussion about what a possible policy could look like. Um, I think we've learned a lot in the last several months. I've certainly talked to a lot of my peers here in the metro area about the exact same issue. Uh, I think that at some point, we're going to have to debrief this here internally and certainly share that with council. Uh, but I'm personally, I'm convinced that our work environment has changed, not just for local government. But for the private sector and not just for the short run. I think there's going to be lots of changes that. Will likely happen in our, and where and when we work.
And we actually, oh, if I'm, if I may, Mayor, we actually have been talking with, with uh, Keith and Noel Make about doing a pilot program. Actually using our HR department first, where we're going to look at trying to actually share office space. And actually try to reduce our uh, staff footprint for the HR department in half. And see how it works. And if we're successful with that and we're still meeting our service level commitments. Especially if we're able to uh, bring an application like we're asking for around the service request management. Uh, we're hoping that we can expand this further into other departments um, that, that don't have that public facing uh, requirement and could look to, to work remotely.
Great. Kelly, did you have a follow-up?
I have another follow-up question. Um, as my husband always says, you know, we're in this for, it's a marathon, it's a sprint. So we're in this for the long haul. Going forward, um, not really knowing how many people are going to be working from home. Uh, I think you said you had earmarks like 50,000. Or um, office setup for remote work. Do you think that that's going to be um, enough money for that?
Yeah, I, I think where we kind of came for that is if, let's say we assume there were going to be 50 employees and what if we basically said something like, here's a, a one-time, a thousand dollar. Basically almost one-time stipend that you could actually use to go set up your home office. So I think that's kind of where we just came up with a ballpark of, of what we could look at doing. Um, but I think we, we definitely would want to do some more re, research to see what others are doing. I think I did mention again, Arapahoe County is moving forward. I think with uh, investment, for example, in ergonomic uh, devices to help their employees. And so we definitely can get, I think, some more research for you in terms of what other, other communities are doing um, in, in terms of this. That's where we came up with just this number for this, just to kind of toss it out there and see if you guys would be um, would be willing to support this ask.
Yeah, and um, I, I would, I would definitely love to know a little bit more research on that because.
Okay.
With my husband working at home a lot, we were talking about it. He works for, you know, a oil and gas company. And a lot of people are working from home now. And you're starting to see like. Hip problems, back problems, because when people are working at home. You're not getting up and moving around. They're not walking down the hall to go see so-and-so or going outside or whatever. So I've heard the term sitting is the new smoking.
That's why I started wearing this again, because my steps were going nowhere.
All right. Great. All right, thank you. Uh, any other, I know Karina, you have a question. Was there any other members that had any other questions? If not, Karina, if you would uh, wrap up the questions and if we have any comments, uh, we'll, we'll keep moving here. But go ahead, uh, council member Elrod.
I'm sorry, I dropped off when Ashley was answering my first question.
Oh, oh.
Please, sorry.
Were you able to hear around the, the track at phase two, Karina?
Um, you just started on track at phase two plans, but that's where.
Okay, yeah, we, basically, we, we have plans already, um, and they're already in the budget and so hence ineligible for CARES Act funds. But we have a, a prerequisite of, we're working with John Schumacher to understand just a few pieces before we actually embark on rolling out the next phase of. Of our permits to get more permit types online. Um, but our goal is by 1231 to have the remaining permit types um, on live. We are taking an agile approach to this where we did a few at first so that we could fine tune them and are learning as we go. And we'll be working on for the council work plan to actually fill in the dates for the remaining permit types. So you guys get a better feel of um. When we're going to deliver those throughout the rest of 2020.
Great.
Have you been iden, uh, able to identify then something beyond track it that would be self-service for our. Um, community either in, you know, for our development community or even maybe more online payments. So beyond track it. Which is ineligible at this point, what other self-service tools we could implement out there?
Yeah, we actually have a, um, well, we're not there yet, but Tiffany and I have been working um, with her department to actually go through all of the different cash receipts. And which departments we get them from to try to get a, a comprehensive overview of. Which are the different departments that don't have a credit card offering today? Some do and we just accept cash. And so I think we can look at an education to make sure that folks do know the different payments that they could make. I think as you guys know, we went live with N Court earlier this year to actually do our court citation fees um, electronically. So that is a work in progress that I think Tiffany and I can come back with you once we have all of our analysis um, done. But we would like again to try to identify um, uh, different uh, possibilities for those departments that do not have a credit card um, option today. Or not credit card, but even again PayPal or any electronic payment.
Uh, thank you. So I'd like to get uh, council member Fay. I know she has a, she has her hand up for a while here now.
Um, uh, going back to um, Kelly's request of Ashley to do further research. Um, could we um, be um, honor the staffs being pretty overworked and take, uh, Mr. Mayor, take a. A vote or something of council uh, with input from the city manager about number one, is there time for staff to do this additional research? Uh, number two, what will not be done if this additional research is done? And then have indication from council if we want that to happen, rather than just loading up staff with a request for one councilman.
Uh, city manager, did you want to respond to that? And then if we could, uh, council, I'd like to maybe wrap up this particular item and get to our last one, because we still have one more full item to go to.
Yeah, I think um, you know, I'd be open to what could we research? When it comes to this category to facilitate compliance. Uh, there's a lot of things that are in motion here by staff. Ashley talked about some of that. I'm not familiar with the detail. So we're taking notes here and my suggestion would be is um, after assuming council proceeds with this. Is I can come back and uh, give council a, a better idea of what we believe we can tackle here for kind of additional research on this topic. I hope that's fair.
Carol, is that addressed?
That, so that means that staff will not go ahead and research this until you come back to council to see if we uh, have a majority that wants it done.
Well, correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, let's, let's go ahead and just go through, uh, this is just for facilitate compliance of 150,000 dollars. Start with council member Driscoll. Yes, no?
Yeah, let's go for it.
All right, uh, Elrod? Did we lose, did we lose council member Elrod? Let, let's go ahead, council member Fay?
Yes.
Thank you. Council member Grove?
Yes.
Uh, Milliman?
Yes.
Great. Uh, Mayor Protam?
Yes.
And, and I as well. Karina, are, are you a yes on this? Yes, no?
A yes.
On the uh, facilitate compliance 150,000? Yes, thank you very much. We're going to move on to our last item. If we can make it kind of quick, because it's a 20,000 dollar item, because we still have another item, uh, which we can take a little time to get through. Uh, so now we're going to talk about the remainder, which was about 20,000 dollars. And that's for a, uh, an assistant of some sort. Uh, is there anybody needing any additional information other than what was explained to us? If not, if, are there any questions at all? If not, let's go right into it. Uh, is everybody, is anybody a, opposed to not doing the 20,000 dollars? Seeing none, it looks like Mark, you have uh, uh, your direction on, on all four of those items. Great, thank you. All right, thank you, council. We'll, we'll get to our last item, which is the revenue discussion. Where's my, revenue discussion? And on this one, we're going to hear again from our finance direct, financial director. Regarding our revenue. And let's see, I'm sorry. And I kept, I don't believe you were looking for any direction. This is just going to be for information only. Is that correct, uh, city manager?
Un, unless there's something of particular significance there that the council identifies and maybe talks about as, that you want to do. I do want to spend uh, just a minute talking a little bit about a potential sales tax around the capital.
And so let, let me just, I'm, I'm sorry, Mark, to interrupt you. So you're, you aren't looking for direction unless for some reason we end up giving you direction?
Correct.
All right. So this is really for information?
Larger.
Um, okay. And again, I know we allocated 90 minutes. You don't have to use 90 minutes.
No problem.
Okay, uh, city manager, are you up?
Yeah, and I'm, I have to digress for a minute, Mayor, because I did want to talk a little bit about on the CARES Act as it relates to the weekends on Main Street. I mentioned this in the beginning, so forgive me, I just remembered. Well, I did send council an email here late today. I'm not sure everybody had an opportunity to see this. But our merchants downtown are looking to try to carry on with the effort the city started. And um, the majority of council just, you know, is, was interested in somehow trying to further this. With financial support and specifically looking at funding the traffic control as well as the police overtime. And so in my email, I mentioned that we are looking to get the downtown merchants association connected to our business grants. Uh, as a way to fund the traffic control. And then I am looking to increase the allocation out of the CARES Act. To cover police overtime in the amount of about 15,000 dollars. So unless council's got any objection, I would uh, look to increase that allocation by 15,000 for the three weekends. So I would like a little comment on that. Sorry, Mayor.
You bet. We'll start with council member Elrod. You bet, we'll start with Councilmember Elrod.
Um, so yeah, please help me reckon down the numbers, so the, um, so the fifteen thousand is in, in kind essentially is what you're requesting, because it's, um, for the overtime of staff. But you're also working for them to apply for business grants, tell me a little bit more about that and how and why that would not cover some of these incremental costs that.
Yeah, specifically, the traffic control would be, you know, the barriers, the barricades, you know, the, the instruments they got, Public Works typically would put down on the street to protect the public, and so there, there's a cost there. And I, I do not have an estimate, uh, tonight, we're hoping that tomorrow I will have that number. And then, uh, the Downtown Association will work with the staff here for, again, for the business grants for traffic control. The police overtime is basically an in-kind cost, and we did cover that cost through the original one hundred thousand allocation out of the CARES Act. That's how the city paid for the police overtime, and so I'm asking for an extension of another fifteen thousand for the same police overtime, in this case for the merchants, uh, three weekends.
And is that because, so part of the grant, um, um, avail- availability to the grant was, um, for businesses to do things like this, right? Um, because we know how valuable it is, um, as well as adding, um, business organization, or organizations that support businesses to do broader scale things like this, um, Littleton Business Chamber, Soodlam, Rotary, you name it. Um, so, um,
I'm, I'm, I'm going to interrupt you at this point, Mark, what agenda item are we talking about here?
The CARES.
Is, is this is back to which line item was it on that?
This is a new item that's, I'm asking for additional allocation, so this would be the fifth item.
Number five.
Correct.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I just wanted to get clarity on that, uh, I was a little, sorry, Karina, to interrupt you.
Um, so we, we created the business grants and the nonprofit grants for this, and I guess I, I, I don't, so you're asking for money on top of what it would have been served through the business grant and nonprofit grant?
Correct, fifteen thousand police overtime.
Yeah, that's, that's what it totals, uh. You're good, Karina?
Yeah.
If not, I know, I know, I know other, others have questions as well.
I, I have no further question.
Great, thank you, uh, Councilmember Driscoll and Fay.
Mark, are there any other parts of the city that are looking for additional funds like this, or is it just mainly downtown? That's number one, number two, uh, I know I sent you an email regarding the, the number of police. I thought the number of police we had for the first five weeks was a little bit overkill, I would hope we can reduce that down to potentially three or so, I don't think we need eight police officers working this event.
Yeah, so, um, as far as the amount of police, yeah, there's, towards the very end of the city event, we did scale this way back, and that's part of why, um, I don't have the final numbers for what's estimated on the police. So that's an estimate based on the city event here from a couple of weeks ago. But yes, the intent is to try to look, you know, safely scale this back to something practical. We, we did learn a lot during the last several weeks, and so that's kind of the intent. Your first question about are there other parts of the city asking for something similar? Um, I, nothing quite like downtown, uh, we have obviously received a, a bunch of requests for business support as well as nonprofits, and we're in the process here of reviewing that here Thursday and Friday. Uh, but there's nothing quite like, uh, downtown event.
Thank you, uh, we have Councilmember Fay.
Yeah, Mark, um, uh, number one, I, I agree with Pat Driscoll that, uh, it, it seems we didn't need as many police officers as we had, they didn't seem to have enough to do. Um, second thing is, um, how many, uh, do you know, how many businesses we have in Littleton? Oodle, and I, I know you know this, how many businesses benefit from this event directly?
Well, we have several thousand businesses in the city of Littleton, I don't know the exact number. Um, but we have, uh, put together a database of what we believe are about forty-eight businesses on Main Street, and that's been our, uh, point of contact here through the last several weeks here, months.
That, that, that's not what I'm, um, asking, uh, how many there are, I'm asking how many is, is this event going to directly benefit those ones who are open and participating?
Well, I think, um, it's hard for me to tell you exactly what that is, Councilmember, because I think obviously the restaurants themselves will benefit, but also any of the other merchants that perhaps stay open, who might see increased foot traffic. I think certainly any of the, uh, businesses that support the restaurants, whether it's, um, uh, seating, food, you name it, beverage, all of that, you know, this, the level of impact goes far beyond just the storefronts themselves. So I think that's why, uh, the C-DOT grant was granted to the city of Littleton here was because they recognized that the impact goes beyond just the storefront. So I can't answer that specifically, but I would argue that it is far-reaching, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Good, thank you, uh, okay, with, uh, Council, so, uh, uh, City Manager's requested another, an additional fifteen thousand dollars for the, uh, weekend on Main Street, is there anybody opposed to that? Okay, seeing none, uh, looks like you have it.
Okay, thank you, and I apologize for not saying it earlier here before we concluded that discussion, so.
That's okay, if we could go ahead and move on to that final item now.
I'm sorry, Jerry, to interrupt, and I'm sorry, Council for interrupting, I didn't have a chance to, just, I have a quick question regarding, um, other merchants. So we, we ran into a situation where other merchants were opposed to this, have you heard anything from other merchants? I just don't want us to be put in that situation.
Um, I have, we've put that responsibility back on the Downtown Merchants Association, District Downtown, Littleton Merchants. Um, I have heard a couple who have been concerned, they were probably the same ones that had concerns in the very beginning. Uh, we are replicating, well, the merchants are replicating the same approach that the city took here. And if you remember, we went ahead and modified that approach the best we could to accommodate, you know, how individual businesses, other merchants were doing, um, you know, drop-offs or pickups, and so that same space is going to be accommodated here with the merchant approach.
All right, all right, thank you, let's get to that last item, uh, if we could. Uh, Mark, again, we're going to go back to revenue discussion, which is ID number twenty dash two ten.
Yes, and thank you, Mayor, with no further delay, let's have Tiffany Hooton, our Finance Director, kind of kick this discussion off.
All right, good evening, this is the revenue discussion, and, uh, the purpose of this discussion is to just kind of review some options for potential fee or sales tax changes that could impact the General Fund or the Capital Projects Fund, but we really want to focus on our needs in the Capital Projects Fund. And, um, uh, we're seeking direction if council has any interest in moving forward with any of these, uh, potential items. So some of the key issues that we want to just touch on briefly is our General Fund. Uh, you know, we're going through a, a pretty hefty review of PBB right now as a result of COVID nineteen, and so we're really reviewing the services and, uh, that we're providing to both internally and externally. And, uh, you know, an increase in revenue to the General Fund would allow us to increase some delivery, uh, service deliveries that we're doing currently, and then maybe making some improvements to that. But I think the number one key thing that we want to focus on is the Capital Projects Fund. You know, we've came to council the last few years and, um, just kind of aerated, you know, the number of capital needs that we have, the number of buildings that we need to, uh, repair, replace, uh, you know, replacing our fleet. We're, we're doing the minimum that we can every year in our fleet, just based on our limited revenues for capital replacements. And so, you know, we have a, an aging infrastructure, when, back in the, uh, two thousand and ten, when we went through the last recession, one of the things that we did is defer maintenance on all of our infrastructure, our vehicles, our buildings, e- even within this building itself. And so we've really, uh, kind of deferred a lot of that maintenance and we're, we, we have issues with that now. Uh, the other thing is we have a lot of unfunded needs throughout the city, uh, we've shared with council in the past, we have eighty, ninety million dollars of potential infrastructure improvements that we have. And then we also have to address CNFA and Mineral and that intersection. And then, of course, there's the safety concerns, we've talked in the past about, uh, Building Two at the Service Center and how it hasn't been, uh, replaced or updated since, I believe it's like nineteen forty-seven, and it's in dire need of replacement. And then again, our lack of dedicated funding related to capital improvements. So just a quick overview, and, you know, this is referencing our twenty twenty budget, and seventy-eight percent of our revenues come from sales and use taxes, that's retail sales tax, general use tax, uh, motor vehicle tax, cigarette, specific ownership, and then franchise fees from Comcast and, uh, some of those other, uh, um, companies of that nature are about five percent. And then our property tax, uh, is only about four percent, since we did reduce the mill levy as a result of the fire inclusion. And then license and permits are three percent, and then ten percent for some of our other revenues, interest and miscellaneous. And the General Fund funds all of our daily operations, this is related to city attorneys, city manager, economic development, information technology, HR, um, police, public works. And so there's a number of departments that are impacted by the General Fund. For the Capital Projects Fund, it's a very different story, we have, uh, currently three main sources of revenue. We have our building use tax, which, uh, we typically budget about one point five million. COVID has definitely, uh, made an impact on use taxes that are coming in right now through the building department. Uh, we are estimating we're going to be down about twenty percent in, uh, twenty twenty. And then in twenty twenty-one, we think there's going to be a lag with that, uh, coming back in twenty twenty-one, so we're going to be about, down about ten percent. That is the one source that has to fund our lease payments, it has to fund our information technology improvements, it has to fund our fleet replacements, um, so we have a number of needs with only one point five million coming in. Uh, we also do receive highway user tax, about one point four million is what we estimated in twenty twenty. Again, we're seeing a reduction in this of about fifteen percent in twenty twenty, uh, just based on COVID and the lack of, uh, use of vehicles on the roads. Um, this is also dedicated to, uh, strictly related, street-related projects. And then we also have our three point one million that was approved as a result of the fire inclusion that is dedicated to streets and infrastructure as well. We have a sm- a small amount of, uh, interest in other items that come into, uh, this fund. Uh, the biggest issue is, this is fund that, uh, has the only dedicated source of building use taxes to fund all over capital infrastructure improvements. And with only one point five million and needs of over ten, twenty million per year, we just do, do not have the revenue to address our, our needs. In our twenty twenty budget, we provided a five-year fiscally constrained plan, and you can see, we estimated we are going to be down about, to about forty-nine thousand in, uh, year twenty twenty-four, and that is only going to look worse when you look at the twenty twenty-one budget because of the reduction in building use taxes and the reduction in H U T F funds. So we're not really, uh, making any headway in our infrastructure improvements in the Capital Projects Fund, and, um, hence this is one of our areas of concern. So if you recall, during the, um, uh, council retreat that we had in, uh, late January, early February, uh, we provided some information on some fee options. Um, and just a reminder, fees, if the council wants to make any changes to fees, um, it is by resolution. Uh, if you want to make any changes to taxes, it does require, uh, a ballot question. So some of the fees that we talked about was a business license fee, there are a number of other cities who charge for an annual business license fee, we in Littleton do not charge for this, this is a, a, a free license that we provide, it is indefinite, we don't even require annual updates, and so we really would like to, uh, have a fee so that we can continue to maintain our database of all of our businesses that do business in Littleton, um, just so we can keep their information updated and provide them services through our Economic Development Group. Uh, another one that we've talked about in the past is a street maintenance fee, and this would be a fee that would be str- dedicated strictly to street maintenance. Uh, you know, we have three point one million now, we have H U T F that fund a number of different street maintenance-related items, but that certainly is not enough to get where we need to be. Uh, a new one that we kind of talked about, and this was included in our cost of service study that we did in twenty nineteen, is the street lighting fee. Uh, there's a couple of orga- or a couple of jurisdictions in the area that charge a fee, and this is something that could be included on an annual or monthly bill, uh, such as a sewer or storm drainage bill. And depending on the fee structure of that, you could potentially bring in eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars related to that. And what this would do is, this would help recoup the cost that we pay Excel Energy to provide street lighting, uh, throughout the city. Some of the tax options that we've talked about before, we had a study session in, uh, twenty nineteen and talked about the lodging tax. Um, I did put on here that this is a potential increase of four hundred and twenty-five thousand, but that was prior to COVID. Uh, one of the largest industries, industries that's been hit after COVID is the travel and leisure industry. Um, during March, April and May, the, some of our local hotels have seen, uh, vacancy rates of ninety percent. Um, so that's, uh, ten percent revenue coming in, and so, uh, the amount of revenues would strictly depend on, uh, the amount of usage for those. But prior to COVID, we were looking at about a, a four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar increase uh, if we offered a three percent additional lo- lodging tax. Um, another one that we've, uh, talked about in the past is a grocery tax, uh, Littleton did have a grocery tax. I believe in two thousand and two, it was, uh, repealed by a citizen initiative, and, uh, it was phased out over the next three years, and so we currently do not have a grocery tax. Uh, today's dollars, it would be equivalent to about four hundred and twenty-five thousand. Uh, and groceries, uh, uh, grocery taxes have actually seen an increase during COVID. Um, just people, uh, shopping, cooking at home, spending more money at the grocery, or their sales have gone up, so we've seen an increase there. Um, the other one is sales and use tax, and again, this is going to depend on what percentage council might look at. I included a table here to kind of give you an idea of what the additional revenues would look like at a three point two five, three five, three seven five, and a four percent tax. Currently, our tax is three percent, so each increment would be an additional three million dollars. Um, another item that we've talked about or that is an option is a bond measure. Uh, bond measures can be, uh, ta- uh, taxing, sorry, a sales tax-driven, uh, bond measure, or it can be a property tax-driven mon- uh, measure. Uh, these are usually targeted for specific projects, the amount will depend on the request, uh, or the need for the project, and these typically sunset in fifteen to twenty years. Uh, I think the one that's most, most recent and prevalent is, uh, retail marijuana or recreational marijuana. Uh, the city is, the, the citizens have already voted, and we have a three percent tax available right now on retail marijuana. Um, so depending on the number of operating facilities that are available, uh, based on some information provided by the local cannabis industry, uh, this could range between nine hundred and thirty-five thousand to one point five million annually. And again, this would depend on if some, all, or none of the, uh, current three operational facilities were to, uh, change what they're offering, or if, uh, all four were to potentially move to recreational if we got that fourth one. Um, this one is, uh, it's going to depend on, um, again, the number and, uh, the sales at each of these locations, uh, likely where they're located, um, but this is information that's been provided by the local cannabis industry. I will say that, um, a neighboring jurisdiction, um, has, uh, three of these currently that are mixed, uh, use, I'll call it, and, uh, it's about one point two million in tax revenues that, uh, the neighboring jurisdiction brings in. You said you wanted this one quick, so I'm doing it quick here. Um, so in conclusion, uh, you know, the city has an obligation to address our aging infrastructure. Uh, we've deferred maintenance for a number of years, and we just do not have the funding to, uh, change from a deferred maintenance to a proactive, uh, point of view. We've got to address our fleet replacement. Um, when we bring forward the twenty twenty-one, uh, budget, you're likely to see some changes on the amount of budget available to replace our current fleet. And this is just because we don't have adequate funding to stay up with the replacement schedules. We have a number of unfunded needs, we've talked about ninety to a hundred million dollars of unfunded needs, and then there's always the safety concerns for both the citizens and the employees in Littleton. I think one thing that if you were to look at a ballot, a potential ballot measure, um, you would want to target it for specific infrastructure improvements, uh, whether it be, uh, related to streets, whether it be related to buildings, uh, a fleet replacement program. Uh, I think, uh, being able to target that will definitely, uh, Uh I think uh being able to target that will definitely uh strengthen that ballot measure. And then, you know, once the debt's retired, it'll sunset. It's not going to be forever. You could put a cap on that. And then you might retain a portion for future maintenance on those infrastructure improvements that you've made. So I think with that, uh if you have specific questions, uh Mark and I are available and uh we're happy to answer any.
Great. And and I'm going to go back to the city manager. And uh specifically, you're not looking for direction tonight. That was information just to present to us. Or are we going to talk about those? I mean, so many of those things. Council members have asked about uh pursuing. Um so do you want that discussion tonight or is that for another night?
Yeah, I think if there's a majority that's interested in any one of these topics here, then depending on what it is. Uh we may carry that some information into the budget discussion here in September. So we don't necessarily need to make some decisions now, but if there are some things you would like more detail on, uh I would like direction on that this evening.
Okay, I'm gonna, so uh the the bottom line is ma- many of those things, the fees, for instance, that you called out. If if council members would like to pursue some of that, uh you would need to hear that direction. Is that correct?
That's correct. But I would like, uh my suggestion is I want to make sure there's at least a majority is interested in some of this, just to. You know, make sure that we spend the adequate time that's on this. Um if that makes sense.
So you're you're saying, uh so you're not looking for specific, you're just looking for a general consensus uh to pursue?
Yeah, takes take the street light fee as an example. Uh my suggestion would be, I'd like to see if there's a majority of council who's interested in pursuing that and would want more detail. Um so rather than just one, I would suggest that we have at least the majority.
So ag- again, I'm going to go back to the issues of the fees. Then we'll just go, the the council will just, uh each member will get a chance to discuss, do they want to pursue it or not and. Uh so what page was that? It was page seven, uh I believe is where we started discussing potential sources. So what what you're looking for, for instance, on the business licensing, you're looking for, does council want to pursue that or street maintenance fees? Street lighting fees. Is that how you want to do that? Gotcha. Okay, cool. All right, council, do you under- do you understand what we're going to do here is uh on page seven of the presentation? That's where uh there were several issues that we started with. So we're we're going to start with uh questions by council first and then we'll we'll go as we get to our comments. We're going to come back. To each, we're going to address each of these items that uh the the staff brought up to see if council wants to pursue them. So we'll start with council member Drisco, then Grove, and then Elrod.
Yeah, I I, you know. I think we're beating a dead horse. I think we need to look at all these fees. Uh I think the sales tax fees probably the mo- most logical. We have the some of the li- lowest sales tax uh in the state and it would be great to uh. Uh have the, I think that's the most serious conversation around that. Um. The the reason I raised my hand early was really to ask Tiffany, you know, we have three point one million dollars coming from the fire. Uh from the increase, you know. From the fire approval. Um and 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 that seems to get lost in in your your numbers. Um. Or did I just miss it?
So the three point one million was uh what I mentioned that is dedicated to street and infrastructure or street related maintenance. And so currently, we have the one point four million for H U T F and we have the three point one million. So that's a total of about four point five million. But uh you know, and I'm sure Keith would be happy to jump in. But the amount of need that we have related to street improvements and traffic improvements. Far exceeds the four point five million in any given year. We just aren't able to fund some of those other things that we need to.
So that three point one million is built into the revenue.
It is.
Okay.
Yes.
Good.
To answer your question, Jerry, I I think all these deserve attention uh as an option too. But I would be most interested in this uh sales tax.
Okay, great. Uh we have council member Grove.
Follow up with what uh Patrick was saying. Uh to staff, do we have enough time to um educate or build awareness on a sales tax? I mean, based on the survey we talked about last week, we heard from citizens that when it comes to funding infrastructure. That they would be interested in that, but is there enough time for an awareness? To see if we could really get something like that passed?
Mayor, if I may, address that. You're going to hear me at the budget discussion in September. Make a very specific recommendation that we pursue a sales tax increase for capital construction. And have that on the ballot for the year twenty twenty one. So um without getting into the detail tonight, because it's hard for council, you you do not see the detail of what we're faced with in the capital project yet. But you will. And I think Tiffany has kind of highlighted some of the concerns. I'll give you an example about fleet. I'm not even sure at this point in time I can recommend that we fund anything for fleet next year, that that capital project fund isn't that much of a crisis. Plus, we have a series of obligations here that we have Dr. Cog funding. For us to address a series of major capital improvements to address growth at Mineral and Santa Fe and County Line Road. And we do not have the funds in place to meet that match obligation, even though eighty percent of it is funded by the feds, by Dr. Cog. So covid nineteen has taken a big hit in the capital project fund. And so that is one specific issue that I will raise with council here in September. To answer your question, if council decides they want to proceed in some fashion, there's a lot of work to decide. What are the projects? How much would the sales tax be? What's the term of the debt? How many years? And how would, how might we sunset that over time? And so we still have a lot of work to be done, but in my opinion, yes, there would be time for us to pursue that if it's in twenty twenty one.
Wh- which means we have to start now.
You have to start in September.
Start in September to get it on a ballot, because if it's a tax increase.
It's not so much getting it on the ballot, but this, I think we have to identify what's the problem or the opportunity that we're trying to address. And so in the capital project fund, it's about, in my opinion, it's about managing the impacts of growth largely. There's some other issues that we need to address in there, building maintenance, uh you know, our thirty some odd buildings and the facilities. But largely, we've heard from our citizens for countless years in business surveys, citizen surveys, they want us to it. To uh you know, uh put some attention to the impacts of growth in capital projects. This is my interpretation of the data. And I think that the council should be talking about that in September. Because our capital project fund is in a crisis and I'm not overstating it. It's in a crisis. We must address it.
Good. So a- again, I'm just trying to get to what uh a direction that the council needs to give to to you. So right now, we're looking at three different fees. That would be business license, street maintenance and street lights. Those are three fees. And those, we do not have to go to a vote on?
Not the fees.
Not the fees. So let you guys, uh would it be okay then if we just go ahead and just stick to the fees for this first part of this conversation? It might be an easier one for us all to look at, because I know we've all talked about that. Uh uh it let me just throw it out there before we have any discussion on it is. Council, is that what you want to do? Do you want to, w- would you like staff to continue? Uh working in the budget regarding these fees? Now, let's start with, so we're going to stick to the fees. That's the the three, the business, street maintenance, street lights. Uh council member Elrod, you have your hand up.
Um yeah, so um I I. The only fee here that I have any interest in pursuing is the business license fee, I think, but m- most importantly, not for the hundred and fifty thousand. But just the fact that um one, that's just, you know, the right uh call it best practices. We want businesses um to submit their licenses. We want to be able to track them. We want to be able to. Um you know, en- ensure they're still a a valid business. So I think twenty five dollars truly is administrative. And I think something we should do even beyond, you know, the the revenue on here. It's just um good practice for us to do. As far as street maintenance and street lighting fee, um I'm assuming that would be charged to the citizens and the community, which I don't want to do. Um at all. Um and you know, to a certain degree, assessing the fee is um lacking that transparency. We spent, you know, the beginning of our meeting today talking about. Um we've already committed and, you know, to our citizens that three point one million was going to street maintenance. So to come back and ask for some other fee structure or more street maintenance, I can't support. So I am not at all in support of street maintenance fees or street lighting fee.
Okay, thank you. So that that, so the clear direction on that from council member Elrod at this point is. She's willing to consider the business fees. And that's where she she ends it right there.
I second everything Karina said.
Uh Patrick just agreed, so he's uh willing to go on the the business fees, but uh that's it for him as well. Uh let's go to council member Milliman. Where are you on the the three fees?
I agree with Patrick and Karina as well.
Great. And we'll go to council member Grove on fees.
I agree with uh what's already been stated. Go with the business fees.
Okay, so that takes us to council member Fay.
I agree.
She's. She's short to the point of nothing else. And we'll go to mayor Protem.
Yeah, I I do not want to pursue a street lighting fee for the reasons that I mentioned at a study session way back earlier in the year. Ditto the street maintenance fees. I'm not interested in pursuing that for a lot of the same reasons. Uh I am interested in pursuing or at least hearing more information about the business license fee simply because I don't like our city to be an outlier. On these kinds of things like impact fees where we shortchange ourselves and at the same time make ourselves an outlier. I do, of course, want the the the, well. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, great. So what I I think the direction you're getting from council at this point, Mark, is that all members are interested in. Hearing more about the business license fee, but not interested in the street maintenance or street light fees.
Crystal clear. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh so let's, then after that, we have three taxes. That's the lodging tax, grocery tax, sales and use tax. Uh that would require us getting on the ballot. If we're going to do it for this coming November. We have to do it in in some time in September, all the the paperwork to get on it. Is that correct, city manager?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not necessarily recommending anything here for twenty twenty ballot, so.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, this is all about at least next year.
Okay, so uh the it that was in, it that was true for the fees as well. So this would be planning ahead for in the budget. Uh which would include taxes, which would have to be approv- uh approved by voters, but we wouldn't do that till twenty twenty one. Gotcha.
The the deadline to get on the coordinated elections is September fourth, so we're pretty much.
It's not going to happen. So so a- again, so this would just be for for staff to. To work on the possibility of uh implementing a tax and what would it bring us, to put in more work. Is that correct?
Yeah, more information if you're interested in.
More information. Okay, cool. Well, that's where, uh uh council, does anybody have a question on the, on what we're asking? Or a direction we're going to give the staff? The direction is the staff to pursue uh informational on on uh lodging, grocery and sales and use tax. Does anybody have a a question? It looks like uh Mr. Driscoll, you have a question.
No, I'm sorry. If if that's the direction we're going, that's fine. I I don't have much interest in gro- grocery tax, but uh they want to look at all three, that's fine.
Okay, so you you'd be willing to pursue the.
The lodging tax, I've been in favor from the last two years. We should, that's already should have been voted on and approved. And the sales tax certainly, and I'd vote for three and a half percent.
Okay, so so grocery tax is the only one you you yourself would leave out at this point. All right, let's go to council member Elrod.
Uh same as Patrick, I'm not in favor of grocery tax.
All right, uh let's go to council member Milliman. You you're muted when you s- spoke, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry about that. I agree. Um not interested in the grocery tax, definitely a lodging and a sales tax. And um yeah, thank you.
Good. Uh council member Grove.
I agree with uh lodging and sales tax.
Great. Council member Fay.
I agree, and I would add that um putting the the grocery tax out there would be an automatic hot button. For many of our voters who have been, who are around for the last time when they defeated it. So it would not help getting uh any of the taxes to have that one on.
Great, thank you. And and I guess I'm the last one and, or or no, I'm sorry, uh mayor Protem.
Yeah, I don't want anything to do with the grocery tax. I am uh in favor of the sales tax dedicated to infrastructure and capital improvements. Uh I agree with Mark that our our capital fund is in crisis. And I am uh in favor of a lodging tax after we've secured our sales tax increase. And I think we need to have another conversation, because I think we've gone a little bit back and forth about what a lodging tax, uh what lodging tax revenues would be devoted to. Uh at one point, it was the arts. At one point, it was something else. Um so, oh, and.
But at least. You're in favor of at least pursuing it, but uh understanding what it is later.
Yeah, and then the only other comment I would make quickly is that um, you know, I think covid has shown. The vulnerabilities of an over reliance on sales tax. I think, you know, the writing's on the wall. If we want to, if we want to um. Sort of increase resiliency, the next time there's a financial issue, we need to be exploring diversifi- diversifying our revenue sources. And I think we need to be creative about that.
Great, thank you. And then for me, I'm only interested in the lodging tax, but I I you have everybody else's support. On the lodging, you have everybody's support on the lodging, but no support on the grocery. And uh all but me support on the sales and use tax.
Um yes, thank you very much, council, and we'll research this material here and we'll include it in the September discussion when we talk about budget.
Karina?
Um what about the bond measure?
We we haven't gotten there yet. Okay, so on the the sales tax, so you you have your direction to fully understand where we are in that. You you can move forward with those issues?
I do.
Okay, good. All right, council, we're going to move on to the bond issue. Uh. And that was uh, it looks like you would want to sunset it within a fifteen to twenty year period. And it's a matter of how much it would be, I guess, at this point. Is that correct, Mark or Tiffany?
Yeah, and then maybe if you're interested in uh doing a bond measure on property taxes versus sales tax.
So that, so the question then on the table is, do we want staff to pursue? Uh providing us information on uh what it will bring to us. Is that, is that correct, Mark?
Yeah, that's correct. And I'm I'm, forgive me here, mayor, but I'm going to jump to my recommendation here on bond measure. I think that we, if we're going to consider a a sales tax increase, we must consider a bond measure. Otherwise, it'll take too long to accumulate the necessary funds to build these large transportation projects. And we've already heard from my citizens through the citizen survey, they just assume get it done sooner. So a bond measure is the only tool. That will really allow us to meet that goal. And I'm not going to recommend that we try to bond against our property tax. Um I think it's too small and then it removes that stream from our revenue in the general fund. And I'm too concerned there that that'll cause other problems, so I would not recommend we bond property tax.
Gotcha. Okay, uh council member Karina, uh council member Karina. You know who you are.
Sam Clark.
Thank you for saying that. Um um Mark and that clarification, because for me, it was, we can't talk about. I I'm I'm not willing to talk about sales tax unless we're talking about a bond measure and um, you know, to have a discussion about bond measure without. So to me, those are um intertwined discussions and part of the decision is. Much more longer term and strategic as we go through that. So um I'm obvi- I'm I'm aligned with um. Where Mark is going to be informing us with this. Again, I just wanted for clarity here. And my point of view is, I want to hear more about these. I'm in no way um at this point supporting any of these actions. Actions related to sales tax or bonds, but I'm very interested in in really becoming informed about what this could mean for us.
Yeah, and I and I believe that that's exactly what the question is, uh council member Elrod, is. They just want, the staff wants to know, should they even pursue getting information for us and exploring it? And I absolutely, we need more information, period. Uh council member Driscoll, you had your hand up. You okay?
Yeah, I'm good with, with what Karina Mark said.
We'll just go around the horn. Council member Milliman.
Um, yeah, I agree. I support that.
All right, thank you. Council member Grove?
I support Mark's recommendation.
Uh, council member Fay?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah.
Yep, same here, same here. So you have a full council support on pursuing that for information purposes for council.
Yes, wonderful. Thank you, council. This is very helpful for staff. So appreciate it.
Great, great. Now, this is our last item, but I just want to make sure that, Mark, you have the direction that you, you need and that staff needs from council to move forward.
Crystal clear.
Great. So what will the next step be then for staff and for council?
Well, when it comes to the revenue options here, we're going to go ahead and take a look at the business fees. There's clearly interest on the part of council. We're going to put some information together about what they could be, what's typical. And I think also that I would like to wrap in a discussion about kind of an annual business license into this discussion. Then on the tax issue, we're going to get, go ahead and put together some information about a property tax, or I'm, property tax, excuse me, sales tax, and what that could be and the potential for being targeted projects. This is going to be probably heavily focused on transportation or growth projects. And then we're also going to put together some information on lodging tax. We've done that recently here. We'll update that. And appreciate the question about, it's a, you know, original discussion about tourism perhaps versus the arts and culture. So we'll bring all that together here and we'll bring that back for the budget discussion here, starting in September. On the issue of bonding, then I heard clearly that the council's very interested if we pursue an increase in sales tax, that it would have to be bonded in order for us to have any meaningful impact here for our citizens. So that's the summary. That's what I heard as the direction.
Great. Council, is that, was your direction? Does anybody not believe they were heard? I think we're there. All right.
Thank you.
Well, that, that was our last item. We can go into our updates then. City manager. You are muted. You're still muted, Mark. There we go.
Now, can you hear me?
I hear you loud.
Okay. I'm going to try to share my screen here. Give me one minute. I can do this.
Ashley's on the phone if you need her.
Yeah, I can call Sam.
Yeah, really. It's, so I did want to spend just a couple of minutes here talking about federal and bowls. As the council's well aware, this has been a project here that we've had in the, in the works here for the last oh, three plus years. And this was a Tabor project, so we did have a vote of our citizens and they did approve a portion of the Tabor excess to dedicate to this particular project. We've had some challenges with this. Even prior to COVID, we had a series of bids that went out and the bids came in too high. And so we had to work with our engineering firm to kind of scale back to fit our budget. So the total construction of this improvement here was about 670,000. The design was 160,000. And I think if you've been through this particular intersection here of late, you can appreciate the significance in the change that's occurred here. Much more pedestrian bicycle safety focused. We had made some improvements to the signal system and protected some of the movements. And so we believe that this is going to go a long ways to protect, quite honestly, one of the more dangerous intersections that we had in the city. And so I think I want to congratulate the staff. They worked pretty hard at, you know, kind of meeting the challenges with this and getting this thing within the budget. And that has been a real challenge. So that's one of my updates. The other thing I just wanted to mention, council, is that in the previous discussion around the CARES Act, we had talked about how requests for food assistance or rental and mortgage assistance, we were going to be looking to the county and having them assist our citizens in some of our nonprofits. And I do have an update just on the issue of rental assistance and mortgage assistance. I've checked in with the county. We do have 17 of our residents right now who have already gained approval. We have many more that have made applications to the county for that rental and mortgage assistance. And so they're looking at coming up with some systems here to kind of report the success of that program. I also asked the question about how they are assisting the homeless throughout the county. And they do have a voucher system that they have been providing. They're trying to put together some kind of a database and reporting system here so they can share with all the cities, you know, where are the homeless being assisted here through the CARES Act? So I think, quite honestly, I want to thank the county staff for putting a lot of this information together. They've been pretty aggressive about, you know, trying to advertise and assist all citizens throughout the county when it comes to the rental and mortgage assistance and plus the homeless. And I'm hoping that the reporting systems in the next couple of months become much more robust. So those are quick, two quick reports, council.
Thank you very much. Council, city attorney.
Mark took most of my time again, but we're also underway with some improvements to Bari and federal down the road in terms of getting that crosswalk in there, but nothing from the city attorney other than that.
Great, thank you very much. And council, anybody else have the dime to say anything else? Doesn't appear to be. With that, it is 10:03 and we are adjourned. Thank you, council.